It is now six o'clock.
Thank you, Jason. If the clerk's office is ready, we'll begin.
Yeah. Okay. Miss. Miss Wu.
Wait, just a second, Darcy. Oh. Just have a couple of comments. First of all, I wanted to let folks know that tonight we have three separate meetings. The first is a hearing for the Cunningham Town Board. The second is a meeting of the Cunningham Township Board, and that will be followed by a meeting of the Urbana City Council. So the first stop on our list here is the notice of the public hearing of the Cunningham Township Board. And this is to receive public input on the fiscal year 2122 annual budget. Public input can also be provided via email to the following address supervisor@cunningham township.org. I'd like to call this hearing to order. Now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Miss Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Miss Hershey.
Here.
Miss Colasetti.
Here.
Miss Bishop.
Here.
Miss Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
And then, because it's township, there's officers as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Miss Chinowith. Mr. Williams.
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is public input on the fiscal year 22 annual budget for the Cunningham Township Board. And I would ask the public if you have comments on any of the other agenda items that appear on the town board meeting which will follow. Please hold those comments for them, but these are comments for the annual budget. If you'd like to make a comment on the budget, please click on the raise hand button, which is in the center bottom of your screen. I see Sarah Nixon.
Hello, this is Sarah Nixon. I just have two quick comments. Actually, the first one is Mayor Marlin, we cannot hear, well, I cannot hear you at all, and I can usually hear you just fine, like, literally, I think there's something wrong with the microphone. I don't think it's just me, but maybe it is. But if that could be fixed, because I can't hear anything you're saying, almost. And second thing was, I noticed that the agenda for this meeting seemed exceptionally bare and devoid of information that that would enable the public to know what is on the table and what the public is being afforded the opportunity to comment on. So I am unable, I just want to state for the record, unable to comment on the budget issues up for discussion, because I don't know, I don't have any information provided that would help me understand what how I could best comment, so I'm just going to shoot in the dark. I don't know if this is relevant, but I would like to say that in Urbana government spending in general, there is just nothing that I know of when it comes to addressing the issue of domestic violence and child abuse. And family violence could be an umbrella for those two categories. Mental health issues is a huge part of family violence, and that, of course, is being discussed actively by the city. But when, when, when we discuss crisis response initiatives, I noticed that there's just nothing, no, like, nobody speaks up for the issue of domestic violence, and I really need to be that person, so please take this into account. If you were able to address my comment, let me know, let us know, the public know if this is not an appropriate comment to make. Again, I really am in the dark, because there was literally zero information on the posted agenda. Thank you for your time.
Again, this, can you hear me okay?
No.
You're kind of quiet.
You're lower than normal.
Let me. How about this? Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. Sorry about that. Again, this hearing is to take input on the fiscal year 22 annual budget for Cunningham Township, and the budget was posted in advance for this purpose. Does anyone else wish to address the Cunningham Town Board for the purposes of commenting on the budget? Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. With that, we will adjourn this public hearing, and we'll move on to the meeting of the Cunningham Town Board. And is the clerk ready to proceed with this meeting? Clerk's office?
Yes.
Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll of the Cunningham Township Board?
Miss Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans. Miss Hershey.
Present.
Miss Colasetti.
Here.
Miss Bishop.
Here.
Miss Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Miss Chinowith.
Present.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the previous meeting of May 10, 2021. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mary Alice, was that Chandra?
Yes.
Seconded by Chandra. Are there any corrections? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Miss Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Miss Hershey.
Yes.
Miss Colasetti.
Yes.
Miss Bishop.
Yes.
Miss Wilkin.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item are additions to the agenda, any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, all right. We'll move on to public participation. If you'd like to address the Cunningham Town Board, please raise your hand. Let me check the list. All right, I'm seeing no hands raised. We'll move on to committee to verify bills. Danielle.
Sure. Good evening. So if you click on committee to verify bills, you will see in the town fund, we had and we had in the general assistance, $114,005.39. The total was $689,810.95. Just so you know, those are very large numbers, because they include the purchase of the building, which was $490,000. So that did not show up on your last town bills. It happened in the interim, and that's why those are very alarming and large figures. As you can see in my supervisor's memo, general assistance stays pretty, pretty constant at close to 100 participants. We're at 99. It's about half between what we're calling the employment and education opportunities track. We're actually redesigning the community work program away from a model that feels punitive and more like probation, and towards a model that is really towards empowerment, education, and employment. So there'll be more information about that soon as we finish the design on that piece, but that's why you see that change in name. I have 10 folks on our SOR track, that's the track to receive support for social security disabilities. So that's actually the largest that track has been. We're very excited that we have a SOR advocate who is paid for through the SSI disbursements. And as you will see, rental assistance is way up. So we did 15 households, we supported 15 households this last month. We were really dipping down in the threes and fours for some months, but we're back up for the last few months. It's been over a dozen. We are providing up to three months of rental assistance while funds last. There's just a lot of people who are behind on rent, and we're actually in a gap right now between ERA, which is emergency rental assistance through Regional Plan Commission. And I believe today is the day that the state has reopened its rental assistance. So anyone who is buying on rent, really important that you apply for rental assistance, please. There's no shame in it. Lots of people are hurting. It's very important to apply early so that you can clear off your rental arrears before the anticipated eviction moratorium ending for the state of Illinois on August 26. The governor has stated his intention not to allow it to go past that next executive order date of August or the two months from now, and so we're really encouraging folks to do that. We are also seeing a high number of utility requests, by high, I mean, more than we have seen in the past. We typically, you know, we might get, you know, assistance request once every week while LIHEP was open, LIHEP has closed, and so now I would say we receive an assistance request about once a day, sometimes once every other day. So we're going to burn through the rest of our Unitarian Universalist Utility Fund here very shortly. I would expect that to be expended by August. I certainly hope that the rental assistance piece will pick that up, because we are seeing some large bills over $1,000 in bills. We continue to do housing advocacy. We've helped 128 general assistance participants. That's really exciting. And at the time of this writing, we had supported 13 residents with disabilities to apply for Pinewood. And then with emergency housing, as you'll see, we are continuing to to pay a hotel for emergency housing. I did have a note that recently the hotel has declared a 42% increase in costs starting July 1. That's a big hit. I'm in the process of negotiating to see if we can do better than that, but we knew this was coming. We knew that the hotels would not have as many vacancies and that we would see an increase. So I do expect with emergency housing, although this month that is represented, we've been at a similar kind of, actually, we've seen an increase in emergency housing because of the closure of CU at Home. The per household amount has remained pretty static, and we will see a significant increase with next month. And then with Bridge to Home, we basically, we're now actually, right now, working with five different individuals in that program. And then I will speak about the budget when we get to that. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the town bills, which you'll see on the PDF is page six, starts on page six.
Questions for Danielle? I would add, based on what we learned at the RPC board meeting on Friday, the RPC does have funding through UDEP, I believe, for utility assistance, anywhere from $250 to $5,000 per per customer, so that funding is available, and Lisa Benson's office will be processing applications for that as well. Okay, is there a motion to approve the town fund and general assistance fund report bills?
I'll move that we approve the town fund and the general assistance fund.
Is there a second?
Oh, second. Grace.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Grace. Further discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry. Mr. Quisenberry. Okay. Miss Wilkin.
Yes.
Miss Bishop.
Yes.
Miss Colasetti.
Yes.
Miss Hershey.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Miss Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Okay. That motion passes. Reports of officers?
Oh, wait, if you want to go, and I can finish.
I don't have any time there.
Okay. I think I have covered everything there is. We'll discuss the budget, the agreement with tenants. Oh, I did want to just give a heads up that we are in the process of hiring two leadership level positions. We have 11 staff now with these two positions, we have 11 staff interns, and because we have launched three new programs last year, because we have grown significantly in terms of our size, both staff and budget, we are in need of, and because I am not a trained social worker, I am a political scientist by trade. So I know my lane is very important that we hire a social service program director who can provide clinical supervision and oversight for our assistance programs. So we're hiring that position, and we also have an accounting and office manager position. Both of these are full-time positions, they are leadership level positions, and if folks are interested in applying, you can go to our website at cunningham township.org and click on employment opportunities. I think that's all in addition to, I gave up the programs. Any questions?
Mary Alice.
Danielle, you had mentioned that you're going to provide more details on the employment and education opportunities track. I'm wondering if you could just give us kind of some high-level items. If I remember correctly, when we approved the lease of the land for the second garden, I believe that was one of the community work program projects that people could do. Are you going to still have those types of projects in the employment and education opportunities?
Yep. So I think the shorts, so actually that garden, which has a number of low-income renters in it, but in terms of the big picture and shifts, it's, we've had the opportunity to retool the program during COVID, because it was closed. What we would like to do and what we are working diligently towards is, in the past, Salt and Light was our only partner. Someone was, say they were working at Salt Light and an ex or someone who they have a conflict with was also working at Salt and Light. They didn't have other options, or they were banned from Salt and Light for some reason. They didn't have other options through our program. So we are basically diversifying our host sites, so we'll have a number of different organizations we're working with. We don't have signed agreements with them, but we have verbal agreements with Habitat for Humanity, Channing Murray Foundation, Salt and Light, and a few other agencies. The second thing, and this is the part I'm really excited about, is we've done a lot of research, thanks to our, thanks to our social work intern Riley. We've done a ton of research on training and education opportunities that specifically fit well with our participant base. There's the SWIFT program, which has received a lot of funding this last year, Adult Ed, the SC Project Youth Build. We have about eight different programs that we have interviewed and spoken with their program directors, and our goal is to provide essentially credit for training and education. We're also looking to provide credit, hours credit, towards people addressing mental health and substance abuse issues. So we really want to kind of expand, meet people where they're at, give them options, and really, we have a kind of an intake process or an intake questionnaire that will help us match people with partners. And so we end, we'll end up doing this in much more kind of robust partnership with a lot of different agencies in the community. And I think it will feel less like probation, where you have to just sew up to the one place we tell you to, and much more like this is an opportunity for you to take your next steps, and you have a lot of choice and agency in that. So that is really the reframe that we're doing, and we're excited to relaunch that program this summer with the first hours, you know, starting in August, September.
Thank you.
I will have more of a written description of the program. We just met today, actually, with, I have draft proposals from the staff. So we met today to kind of refine this, and I can bring them to next month's meeting, but very exciting to work with some of our education partners in the community.
Any questions for Danielle or Wayne? Okay. Wayne, did you have a report, Wayne? I missed what you said before.
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on, on the unfinished business. I don't see any listed. We'll move on to new business. The first item is Resolution Number T 2021-06-008R, which is a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Champaign County GIS Consortium for Geographic Information Systems Services.
This is a contract that we renew annually with the JS Consortium. The price hasn't changed, and I ask that you all approve this contract, allow, approve this resolution that would allow me to sign this contract.
Any technical questions for Wayne? Could we get a motion for approval?
I had a quick question.
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify, this is the GIS, like, aerial shots for doing more accurate assessing, is that right?
No, this is the, this is specifically the Champaign County JS Consortium shots. This is what provides our parcel maps. If there's a split parcel or new subdivision, all of that goes into these, these maps that the JS Consortium maintains. So we don't do split parcels or new subdivisions. We don't maintain that in our office. We get our information from GS.
Thanks. Any other questions? Is there a motion to put this item on the table, on the floor?
I'll move approval of Resolution Number T 2021-06-008R, Resolution Authorizing an Agreement with the Champaign County GIS Consortium for Geographic Information System Services.
Okay.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by James. Discussion. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
Miss Wilkin.
Yes.
Miss Bishop.
Yes.
Miss Colasetti.
Yes.
Miss Hershey.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Miss Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item under new business, Resolution Number T 2021-06-009R, Resolution Authorizing the Supervisor to Execute Lease Agreements with Tenants. Danielle?
Yeah. So, as you know, Township bought two properties on California Avenue with the goal of ending homelessness in Urbana, starting with our kids. The property was marketed as having no lease renewals initially. We have spoken, then we found out about two lease renewals out of the eight units. We've spoken with every tenant, we've heard a number of concerns, and the lease before you gives tenants up to nine months from the time we first notified them through December 31 of this year to move out. They receive a $2,000 cash incentive to move out by August 15, since we understand that it may be more difficult for them to make moving arrangements over the summer. We've sent a resource list of 78 similarly priced units on the market, and we've offered additional support, including sending subsidized housing opportunities to, that are open right now to those who age-qualify right now. It's mostly seniors and people with disabilities. The approach that we've taken is intended to ensure that everyone is taken care of, both our homeless participants and the current tenants. You first saw this lease two weeks ago. You gave some important feedback at that time. I've incorporated all of the feedback that came in. We received feedback from the tenant union. We've accepted all of their changes. I had sent the lease to the tenants on Saturday morning so that they would get a chance to see it and provide feedback. I only received one, one piece of written feedback on the lease, which was requesting whether or not it had been written by an attorney, and the answer is it was written by myself, and Attorney Fred Grocer certainly had multiple review and additions to it. And so at this point, what I would really love is for us to help provide some certainty and closure for the tenants who are there currently. We have several tenants who are currently under a month, their lease ended May 31. But as I have said many times, and I hope that the public is aware that no one, that if your lease ends before the eviction moratorium is over, your landlord is required to allow you to stay month-to-month. This is kind of my mantra that I'm constantly having to say on the phone at Township. It also applies here, that eviction moratorium, and so those who have leases that ended May 31 are under their current lease month-to-month. So what we would like to do is essentially this lease offers that incentive. It gives them assurances that they can stay through December 31 at the same price that they're paying currently with no additional items. It also provides provisions for the tenants so that they can basically pay a month of rent, but then find a place and move out early and receive the rent that they paid back prorated. And it allows them to give us a lot less time. We only need seven days' notice of move out, whereas we are required to give 30 days' notice. So the attention is that this lease really be, you know, in response to the fact that folks may find appropriate leases for them at any given time, and that, you know, we can support them in that process. I will just end with saying that because we work with many people at Township who don't have a lot of funds on hand for out-of-pocket expenses, a feature of this lease is that if people make use of the incentive to move out by August 15, we can actually front if they choose the $2,000 in deposit first month rent, moving expenses or utility hookups directly to those vendors, or they can choose after move out to receive that, that $2,000 incentive as a check, or they can do a combination. So no one has to basically, while they're waiting for their deposit from Township, they will have access to funds so that they can pay their deposit. So, you know, as I said, it's gone through tenant union review multiple times. It was originally, the provisions were essentially drafted in conjunction with the tenant union. We tried to be very fair and even-handed. The issue is essentially our emergency shelter is facing escalating costs. We have one household that we've had to relocate three times in the last two weeks, excuse me, to three different locations, so twice in the last two weeks. That's because hotels are running out of space as we open. So this is what we experienced in 2018. We are unwilling to consider to continue the program as a hotel program. It's not sustainable or tenable. It's very, very onerous and difficult. And so that is why we purchased the property. So we're willing to, you know, we might need to cut back on the number of homeless families that we serve in the fall. I'd really not like to see it. I'm pursuing other options and other locations. Certainly, I also want to make sure that everyone who is at this location, if they're having any hardship in terms of moving, that they're taken care of as well. So I would ask for your timely vote on this so that, you know, both parties can really have certainty and, and start planning for their future.
Any questions for Danielle? James?
So I want to say first that I'm supportive of the goal that we're trying to achieve here. I think this is a needed service that the Township is pursuing. It's a, it's a gap, it's a clearly documented gap. I'm asking my fellow board members to think about, this lease is set to end in Um, I'm asking my fellow board members to think about, um, this lease is set to end in, at the end of December. If we have residents that we've signed this lease with and they have trouble finding a place to move to, uh, do we really want to be looking at their leases ending at the end of December and perhaps being in a situation where that, that's not when apartments turn over in this community. We know, we know that that's not the regular timeline. So I, I, I am inclined to support, uh, the work that has been done here to get a lease and to get some stability. But I, I, I do worry about the timeline that we're setting with this end of December termination to the lease.
Can I just speak to that? Mayor? Sure. So I just want to quote directly from the lease. This is a month a month lease. This month a month lease shall terminate December thirty first, twenty twenty one, unless extended by both parties in writing. So, um, what, what is not acceptable is to have tenants who haven't looked for space or haven't pursued other options, who would come to us and essentially without proof that they've looked for other spaces, simply want to extend the lease past December. But what would be absolutely acceptable is tenants who are working with our office who may experience hardship in terms of moving in this timeframe that we could discuss in the lease extension and at least extension, uh, you know, essentially would, uh, you know, if there's changes to the lease, it would come back to the board. So I guess I would say, James, this, what this, um, this lease offers is essentially an incentive to move immediately, to move by, uh, uh, April, excuse me, an incentive to move by August fifteenth, which is three months in advance of the first notification. It provides, it's a month a month lease that's very fair with no escalator, um, through the end of December. I will be very, very surprised if many people cannot find housing at that timeframe. Given that our office regularly houses people every single week and they are able to find leases with poor credit and other things, because we, that's our, that's our wheelhouse. We help people get into leases. We work with landlords. We negotiate. So if tenants who have hardship need support, we're really a good resource for them to access, to help them get into leases. And if we're working with them and there are issues where they're not able to access leases, this lease provision makes it very clear. I will be very honest that there's several, there, there is at least one tenant who has said, I'm not moving, I'm not leaving. And the fact of the matter is that person needs to look for housing and if they're unwilling to look for housing, then I feel like, you know, if there has not been any progress or movement on the part of a tenant, I don't think it's proper to say, oh, we're going to cut our family's shelter for homeless children down by one unit. Because this tenant or this, it does not feel that they feel entitled to stay for a whole year when they don't have a lease renewal. So I'm just being very honest. I wouldn't, I would strongly encourage you to stick with the lease before us because they're really, you know, it, it basically means that you do have to work with Township on some level or with your landlord on some level if you want to extend your lease past December thirty first. And then frankly, you know, I think in most cases, the tenants habit doing that will do it and we're happy to work with them.
Grace?
Uh, thank you. Had a clarifying question on that topic too, because with the month to month, that's not a requirement to go through the end of the year, right? And it says as long as the tenant gives seven days notice prior to moving out and the rest of their, um, you know, prorated rent for the rest of that month would be repaid and there's no other fees or obligations to stay at that time, correct?
Correct.
If someone finds something, you know, at the end of a semester or some other time, there's no obligation for them to have to stay until the end of the year, if that's not a good time.
Yes. All they have to do is give us seven days notice. And essentially we will, you know, after the, the place is vacated and we've, you know, looked at the deposit situation, we would return their rent. We did return the deposit, et cetera. So really it's, you know, it's not a, it's not, we, we purposely made it not an equal playing field. It is in the best interest of the tenant. They can give us very short notice to move out. They're not obligated. This is really honestly, it's a week to week in some ways, um, for the townships, for township, but it's a month a month for the tenant. So they would have thirty days if for some reason they were in violation of the lease. They'd have thirty days, uh, you know, notice, but we would only have seven days notice.
Uh, any other questions? Chris?
Um, yeah, quick question. Are you providing physical move out assistance for some of the tenants that can't move their own furniture?
Yeah, so the $2,000 assistance was calculated in the following way. We looked at how much will it cost for you to pay, um, at twelve months at a place that might cost more, likely would cost some, you know, would cost more. We're looking at what would you need in terms of a deposit upfront? And then we're looking at, um, moving costs and utility hookups. So essentially we, we calculated the minimum of those, those dollars was fifteen hundred. We added five hundred for there to be some room for maneuver. The largest apartment is a two bedroom apartment. So you can, you know, they're small apartments in terms of the amount of things that need to move in. Absolutely. We can pay the movers directly. The, the tenant does not need to pay out of pocket to the movers. As long as they're a legitimate moving company, we can pay, uh, those movers. Uh, we just would need an invoice, uh, from the mover.
Charisse?
But, um, I like that you say that when I, when I moved from L A, I just rented a truck. Is that considered a, a uh, legitimate mover or in some type, in some kind of way, just like if you rent a U-Haul to go from point A to point B? What is that? Okay, so if, if they rented Penske or U-Haul, you would, you would happily pay just even to, for truck rental.
Basically, we need an invoice. So we're a government agency. We're not going to do under the table cash. That's kind of what I'm explaining because I know some movers do under the table cash. So essentially we need an invoice and we would pay them. And if it's over $600, then the way it works is that you get a W nine and you issue a nine, a ten ninety nine at the end of the year as a vendor. So let's, let's.
Usually like, yeah, when you're renting, when you're renting a truck or something like that, you have to pay ahead of time. So that, that's what I was saying. In, in that case, you, you would also just be willing to give the renter the $2,000.
What we would do is someone would say, hey, I am renting this U-Haul. Here's the estimate. Please call U-Haul and make payment on our behalf. So they would show us their lease, say, I'm moving into this new location. I'd like, you know, you, you to pay U-Haul because I don't want to pay out of pocket. Then we would call U-Haul and do a credit card payment over the phone, um, as long as I had that, that thing from the U-Haul. So absolutely, we can do something like that or two men and a truck or whatever the, you know, the moving cost might be.
Okay. I just wanted to know that, 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 that would be legitimate into your consideration as well.
I would say we're very liberal and legitimate. I'm just, it would exclude cat, you know, we don't deal in cash. So we're not a, we're not a cash agency.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to get this on the floor for consideration?
You move resolution number T twenty twenty one. Which one is this? Oh, six zero zero nine R, resolution authorizing the supervisor to execute lease agreements with tenants.
My second.
Moved by Grace, seconded by Shandra. Discussion. Mary Alice?
Um, I just, I just wanted to say a thank you to Esther Pat. I know that she really worked hard on making sure that this followed all of our ordinances, that it was all good, both landlord and leasing. So I just wanted to call out, uh, all the work that she put into this.
Thank you. Absolutely. Esther has been an amazing partner in the entire project and found things that I didn't catch, of course, because she's been doing it for decades. So I really appreciate her, her look at this.
Any other discussion? Seeing no hands. Um, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Uh, can I just, as for clarification, the motion on the table was for the most recent revised version with the edits by the, um, C U tenant union. Is that correct?
Grace, is that correct? Yeah, yes. And if I need to, yes, to clarify, the motion for approving the most updated version of the lease with the changes from the tenant.
Yep. And I sent a copy of that to the clerk just so that the clerk has that and you can put it on record. Yeah, but I send you both, uh, the clean version and the version of track changes. Thank you for that clarification. I just want to make sure.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, I forgot that.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
We already did the roll, we already did the vote, didn't we?
Yeah, we should do it again because there was a clarification as to what the motion was.
Uh, Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Wilkins or Wilken?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
That motion passes and the revised version of the lease was approved. Next item is ordinance number T twenty one dash zero six dash zero zero one, which is an ordinance approving the Cunningham Township annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty two. And that was, that was in the email that was sent to council today as well.
Yeah, so this is the budget that was put on file April seventh. No, excuse me. It was May, uh, that I presented on the budget. It was, I think, the first, uh, meeting of the new, uh, town board. Um, and part of your orientation was for me to go over the details of the budget. So I don't want to necessarily go over that, uh, go over what I did before. I basically, uh, there's a significant narrative, um, that provides a lot of statistics around our programs. Things of no particularly have to do with, um, changes in the social service program so that we will go towards a more fee for service approach. This is our first balanced budget in years, thanks to the, um, to the taxpayers approving a resolution. And we expect, um, a, um, additional COVID release dollars. So we have put $700,000 in for COVID relief. We've also have expenses. So if for some reason those dollars come, don't come through, we still have a balanced budget, right? Um, in both income and expenses, we should be in good shape. And, uh, essentially you'll see a number of both, uh, staff members who I added this last year under COVID due to the launching of three new programs, um, as well as, uh, the new assistant director. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I know you've had some time to digest it. I haven't, I think I received one question today from a town board member, but if you have any questions down on the floor, I'm happy to answer.
James?
Yeah, I, I hope, I hope this is a simple, simple question to answer. So, and, and because, uh, you know, we're, we're a little bit new to this. I may not have been paying attention when this happened, but the assessor, uh, is now in Lincoln Square, right, renting space in Lincoln Square. And, and in the budget, um, the assessor's office is paying rent for the space in Lincoln Square. Um, my, my question is if that displacement of the assessor was to make, uh, more room for the supervisor's operations, I, I realized that the, you know, the budget was maybe more holistically looked at in the past and this new split is, is part of some changes. I was just curious, um, why the cost, why the assessor's side would be bearing the cost of, of that rent when before they were housed in the, in the office and they made room for supervisor staff.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's two, two different ways to answer the, or two components to my answer. The first is, um, so the assessor's office graciously, when, uh, we expanded, when I came on, we were at three full-time equivalents in the office. We are now including our internship program. So without our internship program, we have eleven staff, including the new staff member we're, we're hiring with the internship program. And I have about eight interns in a given semester and some are full-time, most are very part-time. Essentially, you know, we're sitting, we're, you know, we need about fifteen seats in the office. The office is about the size of my house in terms of square footage. So it's about twenty-two hundred square feet to put fifteen people in it. Um, and we only have, uh, four. It's like, we have seven rooms, some of them quite small, like two rooms are basically one person rooms that are in the space. So I went to the assessor, I went to Wayne and said, you know, we, we, when we come back in person, I'm, I'm not going to fit anymore, even without COVID distancing, we're not going to fit. So, you know, do I need to move out or do you need to move out was kind of the conversation. It didn't make sense for the assessor to stay because the assessor's, um, team has not grown outside, out of their space. So it didn't make sense that they would occupy that whole space. So they actually moved into a quite smaller space and Wayne can talk about that. We went to Lincoln Square. We looked at a number of different spaces. Um, and we found one that was very cost effective, especially if we paid the rent upfront. So that Wayne can speak more to that, but I want to explain that that was basically a request from the supervisor's office that for us to expand programs and our internship program and to really leverage, um, the, that we don't have any space for volunteers. Unfortunately, we're still, we're like totally maxed out. We're red, but we do have, um, space for our interns that we, we needed, you know, we needed to, to part ways, so to speak, in terms of space. But the second has to do with how we have budgeted for space in the past, James. And so what we've done for several years is that everything that was shared was in Town Fund Other. So Town Fund Other was kind of like our shared facilities and so supervisor didn't really have any, you know, facilities costs and assessor didn't have facilities costs. It was all in Town Fund Other. So this budget has shifted. I've gotten rid of Town Fund Other because actually we have two separate facilities. We actually have three. So the office at two oh five West Green Street is under supervisor and all of the expenses, janitorial and maintenance and all of that is very clean. And, um, the assessor's office is now under the assessor. So he did not have in his budget rental costs. They were always in Town Fund Other. They've been moved to the assessor. Um, and then, uh, general assistance actually contains our new properties and the maintenance for that. So hopefully that helps the board and myself as administrator really look at the three properties across the three funds as very separate so that we can look at, you know, utility costs and other things and make sure that we're kind of controlling costs and having a balanced budget within those different properties. Wait, did you have other things you wanted to add to that?
Uh, so I understood James's question to basically be, if I move because of the supervisor expanding, why isn't the rent coming out of her budget? And I think that, um, the answer to that question is, and Danielle alluded to it earlier, is to keep the expenses for each office with each office. Um, and you see that also with the legal, uh, with some of the legal fees also being allocated to each office is kind of keeping the expenses for each office with each office. So now we have the rent expense and the legal expense. We have a little bit of janitorial expense in my budget, um, and telephone and internet, which normally would have come out of, uh, Town Fund Other because it was a shared expense because we, because we had shared space. I mean, and also I think it's important to know, even though we have two separate offices, there are two funds, a town fund and a general assistance fund. That the town fund, fund that, that I share with the supervisor, even though we have two different budgets, we, we share that pool of money. So I think that's also important to, to understand too.
Thanks, that's very helpful.
Any other questions? Mary Alice?
Um, so I had three questions. One's really easy and it's for Wayne. It's not really related to the budget, but I know that since you're here, I thought I'd ask you the question. Is the assessor's office planned to open to the public soon?
Yes, we are talking about that. I have some staff issues that have to work out, but, but yes.
Public how to find you in Lincoln Square?
So we're right next to the Art Coop or Art Co-op, but I believe it's pronounced Art Coop.
Yeah.
I now have a sign up that identifies the office. But we're kind of right dab in the middle of Lincoln Square Mall.
Okay, all right. So then my, my budgetary questions have to do, one with in your supervisor's note, you said that you received a firmer estimate on the property costs for the California Avenue properties. Do you have a, a round number on what the difference was between what you originally thought and what it is now? You're muted, Diane.
The, the, that represents a number of different costs. So what, for example, when I submitted the initial budget, I had no, I did not have a good sense of the insurance costs. I actually still, they gave me an estimate, but it was very ballpark and they're coming out tomorrow morning to assess and give me a final kind of quote. So I actually don't know with property assessment. I also was unclear how many current tenants would be staying. And so I didn't, I didn't necessarily calculate property taxes with the thought that there would be so many market rent or closer to market rent spaces. So I've added some additional. So you'll see an increase in insurance, which still is not totally accurate. You'll see an increase in property taxes also not, not fully accurate. Because we don't know. And, and then I was able to get the mo-, you know, the mower. I added property management. There were a couple of different things that I was able to add to, that essentially were quotes that I received between now and then. So what we saw was, especially with the property taxes, I went ahead and increased what I was expecting to spend this year. Might be that we come under that amount. And again, I'll know, I don't, I think that gave me a pretty good estimate from Torma. That's our insurance company, but I'll know more in a few weeks since they're coming out tomorrow.
So is there a, a gap between what we thought property, uh, property management will cost and, and what you believe it will cost today?
No, initially, so I didn't see a need for property management if we weren't going to have tenants. We, if we are managing the properties with our program participants, we don't need to advertise, we don't need to do outreach, we don't need to do showings. You know, we do, of course, need to do ma- maintenance. And I had a maintenance person install the day I purchased the property, right? So we have that through township directly. But what I've done is I've, I have estimated property management so that assuming that there will be tenants through December thirty-first, possibly beyond, you know, that we'll have a property manager handle that because we are not property managers. We're trying to run assistance programs. So.
Of course, you weren't allocating for rent either. So hopefully those two cancel each other out.
Correct. And you'll see, you'll see the, in, I mean, the, it's, the budget is as balanced as it was before. It's just we saw it increase in income and expenses. So.
And then my last question has to do with the social service funding. So you and I have sat on that committee for a couple of years and we've had this conversation for a couple of years in terms of how, how the program can continue to evolve. And it, it sounded to me, based on your portion in the, in the budget memo, that we were changing things. But last time we had this conversation, we were thinking about going along the same lines as a fee-for-service and so forth. So I just wanted to know, are you changing anything from the last time we talked about this?
Well, so this year was a hybrid approach, which, which you know, because you were on that committee. So for example, Channing Murray Foundation gets paid on a per bucket basis, right? So it's very clear, whereas I have Urbana neighborhood connections get some flat fee. They're not, they're not, they just have a grant essentially. And they do submit at the very end who they served. It may go up, it may go down. So essentially, we are going from a hybrid approach. You know, we used to be all grants. Then we had grants of fee-for-service and now we're going to fee-for-service. So I, you know, I am very excited about this because I think that there's so many needs at township that we haven't been able to meet. Sarah Dixon spoke to one of those needs, especially around sexual violence issues and making sure that the folks we work with, the vast majority of whom have experienced some form of physical violence in their life, that they have access to services and support, et cetera. So being able to really zero in on what our participants need and extending our services outside of our core competence with those through a kind of fee-for-service contract is very exciting. I think we're gonna, you know, essentially see a pretty, we're, we're not dramatically expanding our programs next year because we expanded them in this last year a little bit earlier than expected. Thank you, COVID. But, but next year, I think the expansion of our impact to our participants, to the very low-income residents of Urbana is going to be through this fee-for-service model.
So I guess my, my only concern with that is, and, and just some, some background for the rest of the township board. Some of the funds come from the city, some of the funds come from township. So, but we treat it as one big pot. Right? So we have one big pot of money and we get applications in and we go through the applications and we score them and have a conversation and so forth. So it makes complete sense to me. I mean, the township is, is contributing a hundred thousand dollars. So it makes sense to be able to extend upon the services that the township is not able to provide due to whatever the reason is. Lack of staff, just not enough space, whatever. But, you know, the other amount of money that the city contributes, I think, can go to other things that are beyond the township's needs, right? There are other needs within our community. So I just kind of want to be clear about, I think, a fee-for-service model. And this is one thing we talked about in committee all the time. It makes sense for easy things, right? The bucket brigade is easy. It's a bucket. I think we talked about the, the transportation for the kids. That's easy. You have X number of kids that you transport. But what I think might be a little more challenging is we've given, is it Courage Connection? We, we've given different grants to different groups. And you mentioned the Urbana Neighborhood Connections. And they're like, that one is a hundred percent Urbana people. And are, are we thinking of asking them to just pay by student? I mean, is that, is that what you envision? I'm just trying to understand how the ones that we haven't traditionally paid by person or by student or by mail, how that would work in this new system.
So I think that one thing to clarify is that I don't think we will consider it one bucket anymore with city and township. I think that the, that the city count, you know, when you're wearing your city council hat, I think you all should discuss what your intentions are for the, for the social service funding. And I think that, you know, the city is going to have different goals and different constituents. We share constituents, but in terms of township, we are laser focused on very low-income residents and we're particularly focused on meeting material needs. And that's not the only things that people need. I mean, youth need mentoring and, you know, I know the city is, you know, both, you know, the whole country is dealing with epidemic of gun violence and there's many things that the city needs to address. So I guess I would say from township side, we, because I've been in this position for years, I have a pretty good sense of kind of where we need to extend our services. And I've laid that out some in the budget, but I also, you know, been working on a strategic plan that kind of looks at our holes. And not all of those holes are going to be patched by a small amount of funding. You know, big hole is disabled head of household for homeless families. And really looking at home dollars or, you know, the, the ARPA dollars or working with the housing authority is going to be important with, with patching that hole. So I think what township, what we, what, the next step that you should expect from us is that essentially we'll be laying out for this next year, the areas of work and extension that we need. And then we will be requesting organizations, you know, to submit proposals to respond to those needs.
And on the, on the cit-, on the city side, I can say that we're going to be requesting proposals that focus on youth services and programming. So you mentioned the Neighborhood Connection Center, and that's a priority set by the Community Development Commission and approved in the, and their annual action plan. And that also touches on gun violence and some of the other family needs. But, but it will have a focus on youth services and we'll be bringing more information about that to council shortly.
So it sounds to me like we're dividing the pots now. Is that?
Pots are divided, yeah.
Okay, okay. I was not clear about that. Thank you.
It's been, it's evolved. It's been evolving. Sharice?
I, and I guess the question that I have is the, the new position with the social worker that you are advertising for in your transitional housing model that you, you know, hope, will that person, would that be the person that most people that, that we intake be dealing with as far as regarding you know, transitional housing or even the other services where, where we might, we may end up recommending people for the, like Courage Connection or, or Crisis Nursery or Channing Murray, whatever. That, is that the position that they will be going, they will be going through that, that, that particular person first? Or how is that going to work?
No, the, so this person, right now, I am overseeing all the assistance programs in addition to overseeing all the operations and administration and all of our vendors, right? And so this is a professional, you know, from the soc- social services background who's going to basically provide direction, supervision and oversight for all of our assistance programs and staff. So frontline staff are typically going to be the people who participants interact with. You know, Kyle Patterson, our intake specialist, or it might be Jen Strobe, who's our permanent housing coordinator, or Jasmine Hernandez, who's over both our breach-to-home and our emergency programs. And I, you know, there's many others. But essentially, they would oftentimes be the first point of contact. And then this person would be the person they escalate concerns to. And I will say, the number of cases that we have had to escalate concerns about during COVID and I believe as we, you know, go through recovery processes, is quite formidable. So I'm hiring this person to play that supervision role, that clinical supervision role that I'm, I'm not able to play as, as an elected administrator of the township.
Okay.
To your question, Sharice?
Yeah, I just, I guess, I guess, you know, I'm not quite, I'm not quite acquainted with how the step-by-step way that, that a, a person would go, would come to use township services. So maybe I just want more of an idea of how that goes.
Yeah.
And.
We, I actually just, just assigned our, our intern Riley to produce a graphic of the cus-, what is, you know, the consumer's experience of township, where they enter and how they move through our programs, since we now have five programs. So I can share that with the town board. Once it's complete, I think it would help for you to better understand, you know, for the town board, because we've been growing so fast.
Yeah, I think so, because it's like every year, you know, I know just since I've been involved, it's like every year there's.
It's.
Well, there's new needs and I understand that. I just think that, that there, there needs to be as some, some type of step-by-step, something to say, you know, if you need these services, come to township because this is what, and this is what we will do. This is how we can help you. This is, you know, going from, and I, and I saw, I saw a little bit of something that was kind of like that. But you know, I know, I know that, that it's, it's hard to describe when, when I, when I've tried to tell people that, you know, you can go to, go to Urbana Township, it's on Green Street and they, they can help you out. A lot of times, you know, people are hesitant because I can't give them a step-by-step. I can't tell them, this is who you will talk to. I usually just say, talk, call and ask for Danielle. And that's kind of how it goes.
Yeah.
Need a flow chart.
Yeah, we can provide that flow chart, but also we take walk-ups and phone calls. And we have a frontline staff, so it'll be different people who people communicate with. It might be Shay Robinson, it might be Jen Strobe. It might be Martell Miller. We have different folks who are answering the phones and, and addressing. And oftentimes, and you certainly would be welcome to come visit us anytime. Today I was in the office and I had, I think there were five different people on the phone all at once. So we were even talking that, you know, the other staff members will get involved in answering the phone when the, you know, when the three frontline staff are basically full. Then we've, so it's different people, but I always tell people that, you know, talking to anyone in my office is like talking to me. Like you, when you're talking to them, they know their marching orders and they can provide you with full service.
Any other questions for Danielle?
Hey, I just want to interrupt real quick. And Sharice, I, I don't mean to correct you, but I think it's really important that we differentiate this. It's not Urbana Township, it's Cunningham Township. And the reason I point that out, there is in fact an Urbana Township. We don't want to send our residents there under any circumstances.
I didn't, I didn't realize I had said Urbana Township. Sorry, I know it's Cunningham. Okay.
Thank you for that clarification. Grace?
Uh, thanks. I have two questions. One of them is about the accounts. I'm just trying to understand the structuring. Because it sounds like it's changed just as of this budget. So I'm, I'm going to say things and then if you could correct or confirm, that'd be great. So the budgets are changed instead of the shared pool of town funds that was the supervisor and assessor, because you were in the same spot and it was easier to share those funds. And now on this budget for the first year, there's the total funds that has general assistance and total town fund. And then total town fund has the supervisor and assessor under it separately. Is that correct? Yes. Thanks. And so, I was wondering when we're, so like the FY twenty-two proposed is, I guess it's broken down by each section. So that's like just for the general assistance, assessor, town fund, and then the total, right?
Yeah, so there's, what we call them is divisions. There's supervisor, assessor and general assistance. There's three divisions now instead of four. So just try to, we're trying to simplify. And then there are two funds, just to make your brain spaghetti. So assessor and supervisor is under the town fund and funded by town fund. And then there's, the general assistance is under the general assistance fund. So two essential pots that actually are governed differently by state law, which is why they're important to stay in two pots. And then the three divisions.
Grace, don't worry. We'll have time to confuse you more when we pass eleven in December.
Yeah, I was just wondering the difference too, where it was like the supervisor budget twenty-one and the total fund twenty-one and then the proposed twenty-two. But yeah, I think I'm understanding because of changing the way those accounts are, which makes sense since you're more separate now and separate entities. Uh, my second question was about printing, postage, publishing and stuff. I saw some of those were changing various amounts into the different accounts. And I didn't know if it also related to, you had talked about a campaign for tenants' rights and having some money for a mailing thing, I believe. Was that in there? And just if you could explain a little more about how that money was spread out.
Absolutely. So two places where the printing, where printing and postage are affected. And then there's also publishing. So one is that the more participants we have, the more we mail to them. And we found mail in addition to phone to be a very effective way to communicate with folks. So we keep maxing out on stamps because we're working with so many folks. Publishing, we've included an amount for a new website. If you look at the supervisor's website, it's a very, it's difficult to navigate and especially. it's difficult to navigate and especially to use to apply for assistance. It just uses a Google form and I think we can do something that's more user-friendly. And then the printing, we, I would like to make it a practice every year that we mail a postcard, at least one postcard to every Urbana household using a very affordable approach called every door direct mailing. We did this last year during COVID. I don't want people to come to us because they happen to know somebody who knows township, kind of what you spoke to, Sharice. It's very important people know what can you get when you get to township. So we actually have a postcard that we mailed to everyone. One side was everything you get at township. And the other side was helpful numbers like rape crisis, domestic violence, suicide hotline, crisis services, right? So we'd like to do something similar. We've actually expanded our program, so that postcard is close to out of date at this point. Would like to do another mailing. So every household, whether it's a pastor who, you know, or a, you know, middle-class professional who, you know, may be in contact with people in need or may fall upon need themselves, or it's somebody who is currently in need that everyone should know about township, because what I tell people is we are, we are your insurance policy. You pay through your rent or your taxes into township. And then if you or your neighbors falls into hard times, we're here. And I, I particularly tell folks that because, you know, I spoke with, we spoke with a person on the phone today who said was ashamed to reach out to us, which is very common, actually. And, you know, Martell had to explain, there's no shame. This is what we're here to help. And I tell people, you paid into this and you receive services from it. It is yours. So I'm hoping, you know, to continue to convey that inclusiveness in a printing that would go to everyone. And then in the, in terms of tenant rights, last year, the city graciously allowed us to include in their mailing to landlords, a landlord informational. I thought that was very helpful and I heard from landlords about it. Any place where we can partner with the city when we're doing mailings like that to save expenses. I think the city's been very willing to, to support us in that way. And so I certainly, what I would like to consider this next year is some bus ads. So I put some money in for bus ads, which I think would be the best way to reach tenants.
Uh, any other questions, Sharice?
I was, I was just going to suggest, because she kind of brought it up also. Mailings is, is good, but another thing that I was thinking you may want to, I know a lot of homeless people and, and as, as different entities start to open up more, they hang out at, at the library. It might be good to have just those, those informational postcards available in places like the library and the, and the lobby of the city building.
Postcards are in both places right now, unless we
Okay.
They, they should be there. So we regularly refresh those postcards.
And I was going to say, different churches also in the area.
That's a good idea. Anecdotally, every time that one of our staff members or myself sees somebody asking for money and there's been a lot of folks on the side of the road, I stop and give them postcards. And they, I would say most of the time at this point, because we've really been pushing it, their, their response is, oh yeah, I know about y'all. Oh yeah, I put in a, you know, put in assistance application. Oh yeah, we're there. Or, you know, I get the, we love y'all. And I'm like, just come by if you need some food, like we're here for you. So I do think when I talk with folks on the street, people know about township and that, you know, we've been really, we have a whole street outreach approach now, which I think has really helped with that, that awareness.
Any other questions? Okay, we get a motion to get the budget for fiscal year twenty-two on the floor.
Move to approve ordinance number T two zero two one dash zero six dash zero zero one and ordinance approving the Cunningham Township annual budget for FY twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Shandra, seconded by Chris. Any further discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop? Uh, Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item under new business is ordinance number T twenty-twenty-one dash zero six dash zero zero two, which is an ordinance approving the Cunningham Township annual budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. And this is the revised budget.
That description is incorrect. What you are doing is designating the document as the tentative revised budget. And then you'll be public hearing on that. And then it will be voted on as the budget. So what you're doing is designating the document as the tentative revised budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one.
Okay. So you're designating the document as the revised budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one.
Tentative revised budget, I would order.
Tentative revised budget.
Yes.
For FY twenty-twenty-one.
That's right.
Yep, and it, I'm just going to say two sentences, because it is confusing to the public. What happens is that the budget, we passed a budget for twenty-twenty-one, did that last year. And if there are income, if there are expenses over ten percent of, you know, within a given fund, we essentially need to go to request a revised budget. It was COVID and there were, you know, many, many unexpected income and expense portions. And so essentially what this does is you put the tentative budget on file, the public has until eight, August ninth, as yourselves do as well, to inspect it. And it essentially represents, because it's June twenty-eighth, it represents very close to what will be our, you know, final books for the year. So it's just a requirement that you approve it, because there were so many changes. But what you're seeing is directly out of QuickBooks and it what, it is what we have spent in this year.
So the ordinance title will be corrective and it's, but it's still the right number, T twenty-twenty-one dash zero six dash zero zero two, designating a tentative revised budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one to be on file. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll take a shot at that.
Go for it.
I'll move ordinance number T twenty-twenty-one dash oh six dash oh oh two, designated, designating the tentative revised budget for Cunningham Township for fiscal year twenty-one.
Perfect. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by James, seconded by Mary Alice. Further discussion?
I just wanted to add, and Danielle mentioned, unlike the city or the county, we just can't do budget amendments as we go on. If we're over the ten percent threshold, we have to do an entirely new budget. One thing that is, uh, that helped is that we had a lot of grant money come into the township, which offset a lot of expenses. In the budget you just passed, we also estimated grant money coming into the township. That we're very confident we're going to get, but it was a very conservative estimate of grant money coming into the township. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. That completes new business and with no further business before the Cunningham Town Board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
And when we get the sign from the clerk's office, we'll move on to the Urbana City Council meeting.
Mayor? Could we have like a three-minute recess?
Sure.
Thanks.
Let's make it five. Please be back at seven twenty-four. Okay, welcome back. If the clerk's office is ready, I'll call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order for Monday, June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
Yes. Do I call the roll?
Yes, please.
Okay. Ms. Wu?
Yes, here.
Mr. Evans? Ms. Hersi?
Here. Sorry.
Ms. Colasetti?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Wilkin?
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next item is approval of minutes from the previous meeting. We have three sets of me, uh, meeting minutes on the agenda. One is for the public hearing held on June seventh, twenty-twenty-one. The second is for the special city council meeting held on June seventh, twenty-twenty-one. And then the third is for the city council meeting held on June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move approval of those three meeting minutes. Note, our agenda actually has things a little mixed up, so.
Yes, it does. Just a little. But again, it's the June seventh, twenty-twenty-one city council hearing, the June seventh, twenty-twenty-one special city council meeting, and then the June fourteenth city council meeting. Is there a second? I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Yes, I'll second.
Okay. Are there any corrections? I will say that anytime there's a reference to the short-term workforce training program or SWIFT program, the acronym is actually SWFT, even though we say SWIFT when we refer to it, it's SWFT. So we'll try to correct that throughout the minutes. Okay, is there a, what, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Uh, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yeah.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. And I'd like to thank the clerk's office for getting these minutes out in, in the timely manner that they do. Any additions to the agenda? We don't have any. Next up are public input and presentations. We'll begin with public input. There are no presentations scheduled for tonight. First to speak, Evelyn Underwood, Dr. Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Yes. I didn't have anything too much to say on this evening, but I'm glad that somebody saw my hand. Thank you very much. And I'll be listening.
Thank you.
I'll continue listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tracy Chan.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Tracy Chan. Mayor Marlin, last week, we all got a glimpse of the type of actions you will resort to when people dare to challenge your actions and actually have the power to stop your questionable actions. I've always wondered what will happen when you get a city council that are not puppets, who are too spineless to question or call out your lies and attempts to control decisions that are not yours alone to make. First, we saw your disrespect and tried to sidestep the democratic process by depriving council members and their constituents of their rights to approve appointments. by depriving council members and their constituents of their rights to approve appointments and that were rightly questionable. When council members voiced their opinions and one council member put forth a motion that would essentially prevent you from doing that, you threw a childish tantrum and berated them and questioned their morals and called them unconscionable. What you did is, in your own words, unconscionable. Mayor Marlin, one more thing. The constant reminders to the newly seated council that they are new on the job, that they only have X number of months' experience, particularly when they ask critical questions or make decisions you don't like, is just disrespectful. It is disrespectful to them and to the public. The newly voted council members are fully capable of understanding the issues brought forward to them and have earned the respect of the public who voted for them, to constantly remind them that they are new and implying that they do not fully grasp the issues at hand. When you disagree with their decisions, it's also, in your words, unconscionable. Just stop it. Last week's meeting was also interesting. We got to see what happens when residents like me call out police misconduct as we see it. We got to see a representation of what some police officers are willing to do when their misconduct is called out and residents call for transparency, accountability, and measures that will result in safer policing. Dean Hazen, Chief of Public Safety at Richland Community College, former UPD Police Officer and former City Council Member, misrepresented a survey littered with fake names to City Council. At the same time, Hazen starts gaslighting, accusing me of having a perverted opinion for calling out dangerous misconduct like an officer running around brandishing both a firearm and a taser gun in the midst of civilians, including a baby. According to Hazen, those, those of us, many of us, who feel that the language screaming at a civilian to act like a lady are overly sensitive. We have seen this kind of attitude with police command staff, including a banner police leadership. The extreme reluctance to investigate misconduct, the inability to find misconduct, even though it's documented, to spin the narrative to justify misconduct, lying on police reports to justify use of force, and to gaslight and retaliate against the public who dare to point out misconduct. That's why the public is questioning their reappointments. With attitudes like this, it is no wonder police misconduct continues like a virus permeating police departments. My hope is that they are ethical police officers in our department. Officers will agree that screaming "act like a lady" is just not acceptable. I hope there are police officers who agree that officer ruffs haphazardly swinging, ready to fire weapon while in the midst of other officers and civilians, and the two-handed weapon-yielding officer running around is in fact dangerous and not dangerous not only to the public, but to other officers working alongside him. Maybe you guys can speak out and show that Dean Hazen and the other corrupt officers do not represent the police force. And since I have some time, um, I have a question. Is there a reason why on the agenda, um, all meetings start at six? Um, in the past, um, for example, you had, um, township meetings starting at six-thirty and then city council starting at seven. So we always had a safe time to be there for city council meeting. Now we have no idea if township meeting starts, ends early, then we miss council. Like, we just have to sit there throughout the entire thing. So I was wondering what's the reason for this? Thank you.
Okay, next up is Alan Max Axelrod.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All righty, I'll start when the clock's up, please. Thank you so much. So, my name is Alan Max Axelrod. I am speaking today in my capacity as the Champagne Urbana, uh, as a Champagne Urbana DSA, Democratic Socialists of America co-chair. I'm again speaking to you about the SWIFT program. Uh, thank you, Mayor Marlin, for noting the correction in the meeting minutes. One of the things that we had been talking to you about was funding the SWIFT program outright without any additional explanation. And today, what I'd like to outline to you is a structure by which the City of Urbana can collaborate with the willing members of the Champagne City Council to provide funding for the SWIFT program alongside wraparound services. See, there is a, um, let's call it a, um, justified barrier before the Champagne City Council to fund the SWIFT program outright. However, with positive indication from the City of Urbana that the risks that the City of Champagne is willing to take would be met in kind for a complementary set of programs, such as the SWIFT program, would go a very long way towards changing the landscape of our community as it relates to violence. This isn't not just talking about getting people good jobs, it's giving them good alternatives. When we talk about crime and why people engage in it, part of it is, pardon me, my cat is batting at my binder as I'm speaking. Um, part of it is the fact that people have basically been entrapped to maintain what quality of life they have and that the SWIFT program, in a very swift manner, provides a very appealing alternative. And both the Democratic Socialists of America and the Party for Socialism and Liberation are willing to walk the streets and will be starting to walk the streets this week to help make sure that this program reaches those folks. I've canvassed in the North End and seen unscrupulous activity. I know where they are. And so, one of the things that I want to convey to the City of Urbana is that we are not asking you to just write a check. We are asking you to do as you have done before and prioritize services that another unit of government would also like to see rendered and to help facilitate those services being rendered. Uh, the other thing that I want to pivot to on an individual level in the capacity of campaign lead of No Ameren Shutoffs and Zero Dollar All Volunteer Coalition of forty-nine member organizations and counting, which has expanded into the state of Iowa, is that one of the things that we are encouraged about is the low levels of coronavirus cases. However, there are logistical things that honestly don't cost the city any money and will also bring in a small amount of revenue that are worthy of the city's consideration. One of which is the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program and who it did not cover. The Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program was enacted on April twenty-second, a little over a week since utility shut-offs resumed in two thousand and twenty-one. Anyone who was shut off specifically between the time of April fourteenth, when Ameren Illinois began utility shut-offs in two thousand and twenty-one in earnest without any restriction, and April twenty-second, when the Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program provided funds with no, automatically to the most vulnerable at-risk populations, which definitely had an impact on the COVID case load, have been through this before with other governments, is that they're ineligible. And the way that you can make them eligible is by exploring the Emergency Services and Disaster Agency Act to restore power so that they are, again, eligible. Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next up is Wayne Williams.
Hi, this is Wayne Williams. I'm a county and township assessor. Uh, I went back and forth on whether I should do this during this time or during town board time. Uh, I, I chose to do it during this time. I would like to call out a couple city employees, one of which is on your appointment list today. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge a few employees, Sanford Hess, Kim Hubbard, Vivian Patrol, and Nick Hanson. These employees helped immensely in my two thousand and twenty-one assess work, and I would like to publicly thank them, thank them. They all put up with many urgent emails, both late and early for me, and I cannot have done my job without their hard work. I would like to further thank all of the building inspectors whose names I don't know, but whose work I dearly depend on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Julie Watkins.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, can I see the clock? Thank you.
There you go.
Okay, um, I want to thank you to everyone making public input and, that's, sorry. And for members of council who listen and respond to public input. My first input is about timing. Whether or not the mayor has spoken about altering the process for reappointments, it's clearly the case that other council members expected to vote this council meeting on all the nineteen appointments that were postponed last council meeting. Therefore, since the change in procedure hasn't been done in time, the mayor should today go with what was agreed and she should make a goal to try and achieve the change she approaches for the next year's cycle. Um, and I found it rather odd to complain and lecture others about it's the wrong time when it was the mayor who ran out of time to convince the rest of the council to change what had been done last year and years before, rather than trying to say that she can withdraw and not have all nineteen reappointments. My second comment, I want to reply to a public input last week that lectured people who have objected to police leadership reappointments just because of an officer saying "act like a lady." The words weren't the sole issue. The real issue was how quickly the officer chose force rather than de-escalation. The words, which were sexist, call into question why he made that choice. The rapidity and the words leave the impression that he did not seriously consider de-escalation. That action might be an outlier, but the actions since regarding people's objections are typical of not listening. I've said before, on the issue of safety, that places with the most safety have the most services, not the most police. It's a matter of listening. Thank you for considering these issues. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next up is Arthur Paganini.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'll wait for the timer. Okay, uh, hi, everyone. Uh, my name's Arthur. I'm, uh, representing the Party for Socialism and Liberation, um, in Champagne, Urbana. So really what I wanted to, like, ask city council is to, um, what Alan Axelrod said earlier about SWIFT. I think that SWIFT is the best opportunity that this community has really for, like, um, like its future in terms of, like, preventing gun violence. Um, I was at the Champagne City Council meeting, uh, a few weeks ago, where they had a lot of, uh, like, Back the Blue people. They had a lot of people that were not Back the Blue people, but the common thread in that entire meeting, um, was gun violence. And, um, I was at the, uh, the Capital Improvement Plan meeting that you guys had a few weeks ago, and you were talking about the future of, uh, of the, um, of Urbana. And you were talking about how, um, the city isn't spending enough on its capital projects. It needs to be spending twenty-five million dollars, but you've been spending fourteen million dollars. Well, I would want you guys to extend that same line of thought to education, right? Like, if you think about, like, investing in people, that's what education really is, like, fundamentally. So if you think about, like, making a one-million-dollar investment now in people, in training people, imagine the kind of improve, like, the kind of returns that you're gonna get later on down the road. Um, this isn't new. I'm not, I don't think this is like a novel way of looking at things. Um, but I think that it makes sense. Like, I think that we should be looking to the future to prevent gun violence in the future, not just, you know, Band-Aid solutions right now. Um, Alan said everything that I really wanted to say better than I could say it. Um, but I just want to reiterate that the SWIFT program is a tremendous opportunity for both Urbana and Champagne and the entire community, um, to, to have like a brighter future. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is our Eddie Pratt Jr. Go ahead, Eddie Pratt Jr.
Can you hear me clear? Sorry, I was wrestling with my phone.
Yes.
Okay, uh, hope you're all well tonight. Um, my name is Eddie Pratt Jr. I am a resident of Urbana. I am a member of the Champagne, Urbana Democratic Socialists of America. I am also the creator of the CU Human Rights Coalition, Discourse Place, and, uh, page for all things concerning human rights, community organizations, mobilizing equity and justice. So, obviously, uh, if you listen to, um, Alan's comment, I mean, I don't think there's really much else to really be said, but I'm gonna tell you a little bit of a story in these little bit of three minutes that I have and, uh, let you go into the night with it. So, once upon a time in this very land, uh, at one of the larger employers in the city, I trained a young man to do a job. This man, he was younger than me. He was barely twenty-one. Bright, great work ethic, positive, great teammate, made everybody better, made everybody's day better. One day, coming in, I heard that he wasn't there. I saw people's faces kind of turned a certain way. I couldn't figure out what was going on. My manager was stirring in a way that's unusual in the normal day-to-day. I walked up to him and asked him what was going on. He told me that this young man was out just minding his own business and got caught in crossfire in Danville a few years ago. Another teammate was with him. She didn't get hit, but of course, she was traumatized. She quit three days later. There was a emptiness that was felt in that place for a very long time. His name, I still carry on with me. I say it to myself sometimes when I'm walking, talking to people or engaging with people, because I don't want to forget him. I think about how unfair it was that somebody that didn't get a chance to really live his life got his taken away by just being in the wrong place at the wrong time. But I'll tell you this, that place that he was at was probably a place with very low equitable contributions in our community. If we are going to turn the tide, we must invest in people. We must invest in alternatives. We must invest in a model that sees gun violence being dropped by at least half in the places it's been implemented, a one-stop shop of sorts. We need all of these things. We need trauma-informed education for Black and Brown children. We need all of these things, and we need your help. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next up is Brian Dunn.
Hello, my name is Brian Dunn from Champagne, and I would also like to speak in favor of the SWIFT program. Um, you know, I'm sure nobody's against the SWIFT program, but I think that the timing, uh, you know, coming out of this pandemic and with so many people unemployed, I don't think the timing could be better, and I think that both Urbana and Champagne need to kind of jump on this opportunity to, you know, fund such a great job training program. Uh, you know, not just training in any jobs, but in jobs that are gonna make people at least fifty thousand dollars. Um, yeah, I just think that it's the time is now. You know, this isn't something that we should be thinking about later down the road. We need to, you know, find a way to support this program, to expand this program, broaden this program now. And, uh, so it's And so it's just great to hear so many people chiming in and talking about what a great program that would be. And then also, I would like to just express my concern about, you know, returning to in-person meetings. And I hope that the Urbana City Council can find a way to incorporate a hybrid model that allows for both Zoom comments and in-person comments. Because, you know, Champaign has not done that, and it's definitely hindered who can comment, especially with all the flooding that's been out in Garden Hills. Those community members definitely want to be at city council, but, you know, public transportation isn't even able to get them to city council and back. And a lot of people, you know, can't wade through flooded neighborhoods to get to city council meetings. So the last couple of weeks, there's only been a couple of people from Garden Hills, but they let us know that, you know, the meetings are not accessible. And city council should be willing to cast the widest net possible to, you know, be the best reflection of the city as possible. And I think that, you know, just making sure that we have both Zoom and in-person for people, you know, who can't handle Zoom, you know, either don't have the equipment or don't have the technological capabilities. I think that, you know, we shouldn't be taking any steps back after the pandemic. We should be making everything as accessible as possible, taking what we've learned and, you know, strengthening it as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ben Theobald.
Coming, coming through now?
Yes, you are.
All right. Hi, my name is Ben Theobald. I am a resident of Urbana. I'm a member of Champaign-Urbana DSA, and I have a public fair show on WFT Radio every Monday at six. I just wanted to come and speak a few things. I want to reiterate my support for the Swift program that, you know, I know a lot of people that, you know, Eddie Pratt Jr., who's been very vocal about it, I think, you know, and I don't know what more I could say about it. We need to be investing in our, in our community and giving people opportunities to make, make a living here. And if we want people to stay here in our towns in Champaign-Urbana, then yeah, give them at least, I think it was fifty thousand. So that, I think this would be a really good start and help invest in our communities. I also just want to let you all know that today the Illinois Rental, the Illinois Rental Payment Program for emergency rental assistance, they will, they opened their, I guess we would say, office hours today. They were closed for a period of time, but today they opened their tenant-led application period for their, it's the Illinois Rental Payment Program. Tenants will have until Sunday, the end of Sunday, July eighteenth. So right up until eleven fifty-nine PMs to complete their portion of the application. I just want to get this information out there because we're, as we all know, we're still, and we're still in the pandemic. And in fact, JB Pritzker, our governor, said that the Delta variant, he expects that the Delta variant, which is the more transspreadable variant of COVID-19, he expects that will be the dominant variant of here in the state of Illinois by the fall. So that's unfortunately another thing we have to worry about. You know, as well as, you know, making, keeping people in their, in their homes, making sure people aren't evicted, I believe, are, there is a moratorium on evictions here in Illinois until, until August, I believe. So we need, I think we need to do, make sure, do everything we can to make sure peoples are able to stay in their homes and get as much, get that information about assistance that is available. They can also, the website for anyone listening is the Illinois Housing Development Authority. That's I H D A dot O R G. If they go to the, I believe, at Rental Housing and then Rental Payment Program, they could find all that information. Obviously, there's more information about what, how they qualify and all that information, but I just wanted to let you know that they did open their office hours today, and they're open until Sunday, July, Sunday, July eighteenth. And that's the Illinois Housing Development Authority and their, yeah, Illinois Rental Payment Program. Phone number is eight six six four five four three five seven one. Thank you very much. I'm ending my, I reside for the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next up is C.
I can hear me?
There's quite an echo there.
Okay, how about now? Are you okay?
That's better, Christopher. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. My name is only C. This is Christopher Hansen. Well, they, hello, city council. How are you doing? The last couple of weeks have been interesting. I was sorry to see that some of the city council members have become victims of Mary Shank's work in the News Gazette. I know how that goes. She likes to twist things to her pleasure, doesn't she? And she sure does like to support police. At some point, not today, but sometime, I'd like to talk to city council in the city about the exchange of favors that happens between our police department and Mary Shank in the News Gazette. Because it's really, really, really distorting how the public understands our city. When we have, you know, police officers and the mayor and her administrative department kind of trading favors with someone, so they write favorable articles for her politically, and then Mary Shank gets access to police information without having to submit FOIA requests. It's really kind of gross. We need to kind of talk about how that should work. But what I really wanted to talk about was Dean Hazen's letter that he sent to the city council. The letter which somehow manages to conclude that there are only, only two people in the entire county who are interested in police reform. I think we could tell the letter is rather dishonest. And the arguments that were made in regards to his petition signatures are rather dishonest as well. It was full of fake names and double signatures. I'm going to read some of the signatories that Dean Hazen sent to the city council. So these are people who signed Dean Hazen's petition. So the first one is fire all the police. Fire Chief Seraphin, fire Coker, fire Norton, fire Smizer, fire Searls, another fire Searls. These are people who signed his petition. And Madam Mayor, you're going to have to excuse some language here, because I'm just reading directly from what Dean Hazen sent to the council. This is a public record. One of the signatories was fuck the police. Another signatory was, quote, fuck you from the town of Buckfuckerson. This is what Dean Hazen sent to the city. Another person who signed his letter was, quote, dick enormous. Julia Reitz signed the letter twice, along with many other people all over the country, a large portion of whom are the wives and family members of police officers who don't reside in Urbana. The petition contains dozens of fake names, and it's almost hard to want to spend the time filtering them all out. What Dean Hazen has done here is exactly the caliber of work that we've come to expect from the Urbana Police Department leadership. And, and all they do is lie, deceive, and intimidate until they get their way. I can only imagine that whoever thought Hazen would make a suitable police chief must have the same backwards moral compass that our own mayor seems to have when it comes to appointees. Because he uses the same tactics of lies, deception, and intimidation to get his way. And Mr. Hazen, if you're listening, I would just ask that as a public official, you compose yourself honestly. And if you have a problem with me, act like a man and call me or meet with me so we can discuss the issues. If any of you sitting on the council are not aware of these tactics, being frequently employed by Marlins appointees, then you just haven't been paying attention. Please ask Carol Mitten and Chief Seraphin about the years of police complaints that they destroyed last year. The CPRB was asking for these complaints, and she and the police department didn't want them to have those documents. So apparently, they went back and destroyed years of public records that the CPRB and the public wouldn't be able to see them. Ask Carol Mitten and Chief Seraphin about all the tactics they've employed to deny police complaints. How does that improve, improve public trust? Ask Chief Seraphin how many use-of-force reviews his team has performed in the past three years. Our police policies say that they need to review every use of force, and our mayor has been claiming that this is what's happening. But my research, research shows that in three years, they performed one use of force review, and that was the Aleo Lewis arrest. And by the way, we still don't have all the video from that arrest because the police department refuses to give it to us. So we're going to have this same old boys' club. Nothing has changed. Nothing has improved. And my understanding is this council is going to keep on going with the same old boys' club and appoint the same people who so fiercely resist change.
Your time is up. Thank you very much. Next up is Bianca Nihon.
Yes, hello.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead. Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, hi. I'm a resident in Urbana. My name is Bianca. I'm also the co-chair of the CU DSA. I wanted to voice my support for the Swift program and, and additional funding for that program in particular. I believe that with the funds that necessary, or people that are in need of the, of the forums have the ability to improve their lives in a better way if they had access to higher-paying jobs that can support them, not only them and their family. But I just think that just speaks to like a larger issue in regards to despair and hopelessness when it comes to feeling like you don't have anything to like look forward to. So I, I really want the Champaign and Urbana City Council to understand that there are people that are, that feel hopeless. And little things, just like having the ability to feed their families with a decent job and support them could be one of the things that can be life-changing for them. So it may seem like a small thing, a yes or no for a checkbox for, for you guys, but it's, it's literally life and death for some people. So I want you guys to keep that in mind. You guys are making these type of decisions when it comes to having programs to support your residents and make sure that they do have the ability to have alternatives, not just from violence or from domestic violence or community violence, but from hopelessness and despair in general. Especially coming out of the year that we've had, we have to keep that in mind that there are a lot of things that contribute to those types of things. And if we have the ability to at least alleviate some of that, then we, it's our responsibility and our duty to make sure that we can. That's all.
Thank you. And next person is Sarah Nixon.
Hello, city council. As of two weeks ago, Champaign-Urbana began hearing an outcry from Back the Blue for better city leadership and better police leadership. I joined that outcry as a survivor of domestic violence and a survivor of police wrongdoing, including failure to follow basic domestic violence protocol. I know firsthand that our police leadership lacks integrity, honesty, and honor. If Back the Blue stands for these qualities in police leadership, then I'm with you. I back you. Back the Blue. Having listened attentively in real time to the hours of public input given by Back the Blue two weeks ago at Champaign City Council meeting, I do trust that the majority is pro-solution, pro-transparency, pro-accountability, and pro-responsible and responsive leadership. And everyone calling for accountable and professional police leadership needs to unite and call on our city leadership to change course and go in the right direction. Because good officers, upright officers who only wish to serve and protect and work within a departmental culture that holds itself to the highest ethical and service standards are also being betrayed egregiously. So speaking for myself, I'm glad that you are now speaking up. Public discourse does not feel right when it is one-sided. Democracy only works when all parts come together. And if you stand for ethics, for integrity, for courage and honor, and I believe you do, then we do stand all together. But I have to ask, what is happening with policing? Why is the profession failing to screen out, weed out, and police its own? Law enforcement can do so much better and must do better. Everyone's safety depends on it. And that takes me to the whistleblowers, to the brave whistleblowers at the Urbana Fire Department and Police Department. Know your protections and rights. Any retaliation, whether in or out of the workplace, and any threatened retaliation for exposing workplace misconduct constitutes a Class A misdemeanor under the Illinois Whistleblowing Act. Seven forty Illinois compiled statute, section one seventy-four slash twenty-point-one. Look it up. Your Workplace or Union Handbook may not contain this info. Defines retaliation by an employer because of the employee disclosing or attempting to disclose public corruption or wrongdoing. And know that you are entitled to remedies under the law. So I want to encourage the whistleblowers. I applaud their bravery. While putting on your uniforms and gear to go out and fight fires and crime is a mark of your courage, but you are fully supported in doing those things and have been trained. But nobody trains whistleblowers, and in toxic institutions, few support them. Most of you who serve in the UPBD and Fire Department are brave men and women, but it takes next-level courage to expose wrongdoing among the senior ranks. So I support you, and all good people do as well. And those who do not support and protect the whistleblowers are the problem. A tiny, yet too powerful group of executive bureaucrats and management appointees who carry on in the shadows. I have said it before, and I'm saying it again. Urbana needs to be scrutinizing the union bureaucrats and the Fraternal Order of Police and the firefighters' union, and the appointed and reappointed puppets on strings who dance to their tunes. Last but far from least, it is shameful to hear tonight people minimizing Corey Coker's misconduct and limiting it to his verbal insult, act like a lady. You know that he participated in the violent assault and escalation of an innocent Urbana resident. And while instead he was obligated, under Urbana Police Department policy, to de-escalate and to respond to the victim following domestic violence protocol, which was clearly called for. I recognize that I'm out of time, so I will wrap up here. But there is much more to be discussed with regard to the appointment unconscionable.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Sarah Nixon. Next up is Teresa Hoffman.
Hello, I just wanted to let you know, I am watching the city council meeting from home, and I appreciate everyone with their public input. I do appreciate the council members that are listening to everyone's public input with full attention on the screen. And I hope that they continue to do so and focus on what's important on what is going on right at the moment. I appreciate your time and have a good evening.
Thank you. Next up is Dean Hazen. Go ahead, Dean. You're muted if you're, there you go.
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't get to hear me, did you?
No, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Dean Hazen, and I just wanted to respond to Chris Hansen's comments about that petition. If that petition had profanity on it, like he described, I truly apologize to you and to the public. Obviously, certain somebody's went into my petition and put in some, some profanity. I filtered those out and did the count on it. And that's what I sent you on an email, was what I believe to be an accurate count based on filtering out those profanities. But I don't think I hit the save button on my computer. So obviously, you got the, the copy with the profanities. So I do apologize to everybody that anybody had to read that or hear that. As far as Chris's invite to meet with him, I'm not going to do that. I kind of quit doing that around the sixth or seventh grade. But I do hope that Chris gets some help. I feel sorry for him. I can tell by listening to a couple of these meetings that he's really got a mental problem. And I, in all sincerity, feel sorry for him. Again, thank you for receiving the petition. I believe that ninety-five percent of those names are valid. And that's being very, very liberal to say that. There were a few that were hacked into there. So thank you all very much and have a good night.
Thank you. And that looks like everyone has had a chance to speak. You know, Dr. Underwood's hand is still up, but I know she said she was going to be listening. All right, we'll move on to council input and communications. Do we have any comments from council? All right, we'll move on to council input and communications. Do we have any comments from council? Remember, you have three minutes, up to three minutes. James?
Yeah, I do again, thank the public who have called in tonight and participated. Also want to thank the numerous people who have emailed us with their input. The more we hear from the residents of Urbana and our neighbors, the more information we have to make our decisions is a very good thing. I do want to give a shout out to our fire department. I had unfortunately an opportunity to get their services. Our church on Phila Road had a fire alarm over the weekend. Fortunately, no fire. But I do want to say how impressed I was with the response time. The station in downtown had to come because the station right across the street was serving a medical call. But they came, they were very professional, very helpful, and that's been my experience every time I've had to work with our fire department. So thanks for the work you guys do.
Any other council members wish to make comments? Chandra?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. As Jane said, I want to thank everyone who chose to participate in the process by sending emails with your input. Thank you to everyone except the racist dude who blamed black people for the gun violence. I found that email to be wholly offensive as there are black men, young and old, who are in my family, who are my friends, and who I represent in Ward Five. I point this particular email out because this individual was a former law enforcement officer, as he was eight years ago. And that mentality is why I take these appointments seriously. If we hope to change the culture and the perception of police, then we have to ensure that those running the department don't have values and biases similar to the individual who sent me that email. So I have nothing against current command staff, and I'm here to ensure that relations between community and police improve while also working to keep residents safe and break trauma cycles in our community. So like I said, this isn't personal. I'm merely making sure I'm able to speak for all of the residents I represent. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Grace?
Thank you. Want to also thank the public for your input in meetings and emails and agree with some of them that have some, you know, what I see as harmful views that have been within some of our city systems. I agree that we need more funding and resources towards investing in the community. And I hope that we can have open, productive, and strategic conversations about spending ARP money, the equals money in the next budget, and future city spending. I have concerns about appointments and reappointment processes in the city. I have confidence that these positions will be approved, and I still have concerns about the entire process and a few individuals. I'm looking forward to working on the city code to have a more clearly laid out process for appointments and reappointments. And I want to see that our city staff is supported, that they have things like constructive annual performance reviews, job satisfaction surveys, employee feedback, professional development, maybe professional mentorship programs. And that includes all cities or all employees under Urbana Government and Services. There have been some requests from the public for more information and input from various groups, including the public, employees, and officers themselves. I think we need to work together to address community safety and the best interest of the public to work towards the shared principles of the city and the police department, which includes rejecting discrimination, building and rebuilding trust, developing strong relationships with communities of color, supporting diversity, and using de-escalation, among others. My goal is to serve and protect the public and provide my opinion, questions, and vote to aid the city in serving the public. I hope that, on another note too, that when we return to council chambers, that we will continue a hybrid model as suggested. From what I've looked into on the Open Meetings Act, it looks like it very much allows and supports whatever is most accessible to the public. And I think that with barriers of transportation, COVID, and just all sorts of things, I would like to see a hybrid model. And it looks like that's what's supported being most accessible to the public. Thanks.
Christopher and then Jaya.
Yeah, I want to just second what Councilmember Wilkins said. I want to thank the public for their input tonight. If I'm not on screen, it's because I'm taking notes, so I am listening to your comments. It's, I want to thank everyone that's emailed me about the appointment process and the police command staff and the fire command staff. I appreciate the input and I appreciate the dialogue. And I hope that can continue. Going forward, we do need to address the appointment process. We plan to rewrite the code entirely to specify exactly how the appointment process will go in the future. And so if it's been a little rocky about the appointments this year, know that we're going to try to fix it. So this won't happen next year or in years to come. Thank you.
Jay?
Well, at risk of sounding like a broken record, I'd also like to thank all the ways that we got input from people, whether it was logging on to meetings or sending emails. It really is important to hear those different perspectives. I also want to echo the challenges that we've seen with this process and give a note of thanks to the staff for helping us navigate it as best that we could. I know some of us had questions, and I've seen the staff be open and responsive to providing that information. I can say for myself that making an informed decision is really important. And that is one of the challenges with the process as it currently stands. So having that time to have discussions, make sure we had the information we needed, was, I think, an incredible service. And I also want to give recognition to, on top of the fact that there's been this challenge, we also had an additional budget amendment which should further these discussions as we move into an evaluation of public safety needs with that focus on racial equity as well. So echoing what other members have said, we recognize that this process is not working. We will work to address it, and please do continue to engage. We want to make sure that the community is part of these discussions.
Thank you. Sharice, and then Mary Alice.
Yeah, but I basically just kind of want to piggyback on what Chandra was saying regarding the the input that was sent to me, with the exception of also the one letter that I received that was that pretty much proved what I said before and actually have said to the law enforcement leadership is that we are not criminals first and Americans second. Everyone has that kind of issue, any of you are American, though, and you belong to a particular cultural group. Nobody's perfect. And when I see that person, I want to see him walk on water. But I did appreciate, and I much do, I do much appreciate all the emails, even if I do not respond to you. Know that I am reading your emails and I do appreciate your input. Sometimes it's just, it's overwhelming. But I appreciate any input and I work every day so that I can make an informed decision by talking to the people that I'm actually reappointing or being considered to be your point, and not just them, but the people that work under them. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Mary Alice?
Yeah, I'll make my comments brief. A lot of people already talked about some things that were top of mind for myself. One thing, what Sarah Nixon said I thought was really the direction that I feel that the City Council wants to go. And I want to thank Chandra and Jaya for bringing the discussion topic up of how are we going to move this conversation forward? And I think we have a direction. We, and I really think that we can move this needle this upcoming year. That's it.
All right, that concludes council member comments. We'll move on to unfinished business. The first item there are the mayoral staff reappointments for fiscal year '22, which are effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. As a way of introduction, I'm providing the fiscal year '22 annual staff reappointments for approval. All of these individuals previously have gone through the appointment and city council approval process when they were first hired. Our city code specifies annual reappointments for some positions, and others have been added to the appointment list over the years, but they're not specified in city code. But just so that the public is clear on what we're doing here tonight, the people on the reappointment list are not applying for jobs, they're not being hired for these jobs, they're currently doing these jobs. So over the past week, city staff and I have had very productive conversations with any council members, all the council members who sought more information about the reappointees and the overall process. And I think we both learned from that process where things were confusing and where things needed to be improved. And I've known it for years. We need to improve this process. So I want to thank council members for very valuable feedback, for suggestions for improving the staff reappointment process. And we're going to be taking those into account and propose long overdue revisions. The people who are up for reappointment tonight include senior leadership, such as the city administrator. And I'm just going to read out the names actually right now. So for the executive department, it's Carol Mitten for city administrator, Carla Boyd, human rights and equity officer, Sanford Hess, information technology manager, Andrea Rudy, senior advisor for integrated strategy development. Andrea is on a limited term appointment for work on the comprehensive plan. In the community development services department, Lori Pearson, community development services director. Human resource and finance department, Elizabeth Hannan, who's the human resource and finance director, and also the chief financial officer, and Shannon Clark, deputy finance director. In the fire department, Charles Losz, fire chief, Demond Dade, deputy fire chief, Kyle Hench, Clint Whitehead, and Mike Wallace, all fire division chiefs. In the police department, Brian Seraphin for police chief, Richard Searls for deputy police chief, Jason Norton, police lieutenant, Dave Smizer, Matt Bain, and Cory Coker, also police lieutenants. As we noted in the memo, that several positions are vacant, but they are being filled through contractual services. And that would be for the public works director, city engineer, and city attorney. And as also noted in the memo, grants manager Sheila Dodd will be moved to civil service. So I want to thank each and every one of the reappointees, and in fact, all the city employees for their extraordinary efforts over the past 18 months of the pandemic. Every task in the city was harder during COVID, and I'm sure you all experienced that same in your workplace as well. But these employees did their jobs above and beyond to maintain our city's core programs and services. They came to work, they stayed late, they worked weekends when needed. And what was especially amazing about this leadership team is that they were so creative, so flexible, and they responded to constantly changing rules and guidelines. And sometimes it would be several times a day. So if you can imagine, you're trying to maintain stability and functioning of government, and you all operated under the same, some of these same conditions. And things changed and shifted underfoot. And it's just remarkable that together, this team, and it was this team that led the city through the pandemic and enabled us to be as successful as we were in not only maintaining our programs and services, but accomplishing a number of major projects and improvements in the city. And this was done despite the fact and in spite, and along with the fact that our employees, like everybody else in the community, dealt with illness, they dealt with death, they had childcare challenges, they were remote schooling, children at home. And they all experienced the same uncertainty and fear that the community did. And some, a few employees also dealt with unprecedented and unrelenting level of verbal attacks, public bullying in some meetings, city council meetings, but also board and commission meetings. And that went for some board and commission members as well. But through it all, they did their jobs. I think city of Urbana employees are some of the best I have ever worked with, and it's an honor to work beside them. So I am honored to bring this list for your consideration. And before I ask for a motion, Carol Mitten, city administrator, just had a few comments to make as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that we appreciate the time the council has committed in the few short weeks since you were sworn in to try and understand the city government and the role of the leadership team. For your benefit and the benefit of our residents, I want to share a little bit more perspective on the importance of continuity in the leadership ranks. I want to begin by saying that it's impossible for people who don't work inside the government to really appreciate what goes on internally. What I will share with you is that, under Mayor Marlin's direction, we have transformed the leadership ranks in this city. And I do mean transformed, since all but a few of the folks that are on the appointment list were first appointed to their jobs by Mayor Marlin. Formerly, there was no shared sense of purpose, and department heads were operating in a siloed fashion. Some department heads were figureheads who really didn't contribute to day-to-day operations. That has changed. You've heard me say before that we run a very lean organization. We're only able to do that because everyone rolls up their sleeves and digs in at all levels. And we have a common sense of purpose and spend an enormous amount of time collaborating. The culture is not one of protecting one's turf or avoiding blame, but rather mutual support, hard work, and good humor. Every organization is organic. It changes. It regenerates. When even one person leaves, we have to recalibrate the needs of the organization to rebalance the skill sets that remain with the skills we need to recruit. And we do need to be able to recruit. In any given year, we have to recruit approximately two dozen new employees. We currently have 17 open positions that we're recruiting for. It's no secret that we don't pay the highest salaries in the area. We are very competitive, however, when it comes to workplace culture. Our leadership team has been deliberate about fostering a culture where people want to come to work. Does that mean everyone is blissfully happy? No. But the majority of our employees feel respected, challenged, and supported. Anything that undermines our employees' ability to say that Urbana is a good place to work damages our ability to keep the organization strong. So the actions that you take, both tonight and in the future, become part of the narrative about whether our employees feel respected and supported. So please consider your role in keeping Urbana City Government an employer of choice as you discuss and vote on the mayor's slate of appointments. And I just want to echo what the mayor said. It's an honor to serve with all of these people. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to apologize. I left off the public works reappointee on the list. It's Vince Govsterson. This was on page two of your agenda. So Deputy Public Works Director for Operations. Is there a motion for these reappointments? Mary Alice?
I'll move approval of the fiscal year 2022 appointments, and I believe there's 19 on this list. Is that correct?
I believe it's 18.
18.
I'll second.
You're 19. I'm sorry. It's 19.
And that doesn't affect my second?
Okay. Discussion. Is that Chris?
Yeah. There must be some reason why appointments are given to city council for approval. And without knowing for sure, I'm And without knowing for sure, I'm speculating it's because the City of Urbana has chosen to allow its representatives to approve or disprove of these appointments because it's the public's business, and it will be the public who will be affected by these appointments. I think in the future that this needs to be a much more public process, that these appointees, you know, however we describe it, biographies, resumes, goals for the upcoming year, whatever it is that the candidates, you know, what the public should know about the candidates needs to be presented to the public in advance of these votes. No longer can we just have a list of names who we don't know, especially with a new council. And yes, we want to make the workforce, I mean, the workplace in the City of Urbana attractive. At the same time, we want to hold all, you know, these are policy-making appointments. These are, you know, fairly good salaries that the taxpayers are throwing in, and I think the public has a right to see who's being appointed and weigh in to the representatives of why or why not they should be appointed. So, I appreciate Carol Mitten's comments. At the same time, I just want to represent that the public has an interest in this too, and I hope we can safeguard the public's input in this process. Thank you.
Further discussion. Mary Alice?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think from what I've heard from everybody tonight, I think we all recognize that there is a need to change this process, which requires us changing the code and also giving more certainty to people who work at the City of Urbana. I would like to call out, I know that this has been an uncertain time, and I would like to thank the families of all the employees who support them during this time, because I know it's also stressful on those families.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
No.
Mr. Quizenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you. I will move on to reports of standing committees. And that would be council member Jaya Colasetti.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, we have two items on the consent agenda would recommend for approval.
Could you please read them?
Okay, I'm figuring out the process still, sure. The first is resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero six dash zero two five R, a resolution approving a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Program Agreement for RPC Senior Repair Program. And the second is resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero six dash zero two six R, a resolution to approve an amendment to a tornado siren intergovernmental agreement.
So then the next step would be to ask if anyone wants to pull either of those two items off the consent agenda in case they want to discuss?
Thank you. Would anyone like to pull one of those items off of the consent agenda?
Okay. Looks like we are ready to move on that item. So, we had a motion by Jaya Colasetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by James. Will the city clerk's office please call the roll?
Mr. Quizenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next recommendation from the committee of the whole is an ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero six dash zero two three, an ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-one budget with recommendation for approval. Is there any discussion?
I'll second that.
We'll need a second. So, smooth by Jaya, seconded by Mary Alice. Okay, discussion. Elizabeth, did you want to comment on this?
I'm sure if you would like, we did, I did include a short memo in the packet explaining the changes that were made based on the council request at the last meeting, and that was reviewed by the council members who originated that request. And I think at this point, it's what you're looking for. So, but if you have questions about other changes, I'm happy to take them.
Any other questions?
Which item are we on?
We're on two. I believe she called the budget amendment, right?
For fiscal year twenty-one?
Yes, yeah, both are attached to the memo.
Are we doing them separately? I have a question about the twenty-two one.
Yeah, we're doing them separate. So this is the ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-one budget. Actually, it's revising. Is that revising?
The title of the ordinance is revising. It's commonly referred to as a budget amendment.
Okay. Any questions on that one?
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quizenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Good day.
All right, next we have ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero six dash zero two four, an ordinance adopting fiscal year twenty-two budget, including the amendments that were listed at the committee of the whole and the one that was included in the memo for recommendation for approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, moved by Jaya, seconded by Sharice. Discussion.
So, I had a quick question.
Sure.
The, I don't think there were any amendments. I know that there were changes, but I think the changes are actually reflected in the existing ordinance now, as they were updated by Elizabeth. Is that correct?
Correct. The ordinance that you have in front of me, in front of you, that was in the packet includes the change that was discussed last week.
Okay, so do we need to amend the motion since there's technically no amendments to it?
I can, can restate it.
I'm just, I just want to make sure we get the budget passed correctly.
Good point of clarification, maybe just to state it correctly. On behalf of the committee of the whole, I'm recommending ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero six dash zero two four, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year twenty-two budget for approval.
And I'll second again.
Grace?
Thank you. I see the change about admin other professional services, and that's for the study, correct? And is there any more like specific language in there? You know, like other professional services seems like very vague. Is there a more detailed description of it in the budget?
So, as we discussed last week, the budget, budget is really the numbers, but you will find in the cover memo, there's an explanation of what the intent is. And actually, in the ordinance on the last whereas clause on the first page, it also indicates what the intent was there.
Thank you. And for the training, I was wondering if you could point me to the number amount in the budget and if there's a narrative part as well that I'm missing.
So, you were, you were looking, you might have to refresh my memory a little bit, because I know there was some discussion about training, and specifically the thirty-five thousand that was allocated for new training in police patrol. Is that what we're talking about?
Specifically for de-escalation training, but yes, that thirty-five.
Right, so that would be included in a line item on page seventy-three of the budget. And, but it's not called out separately, because that's not a separate line item. It's part of the training budget there. And the training budget in that line item is fifty-seven thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars.
Is there any more specific stuff on separating out that portion for this training? I guess I was confused how that one budget chunk gets flagged for the different uses.
So, it's flagged in our financial system because it was designated for that. But again, technically, the budget is, you're approving the numbers. But I think it's understood in the organization what the intent is with those funds.
Does that answer your question, Grace?
I believe so, thank you.
Okay. Any other council comment? Okay, we have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Quizenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
On behalf of the committee of the whole, I'd like to recommend resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero six dash zero two four R, a resolution adopting the capital improvement plan for approval.
Is there a second? Grace? Moved by Jaya, seconded by Grace. Any discussion? We do have our public works director, Tim Cowan, here, if you had questions for him as well.
Grace?
I do have questions about quite a few of these projects, because they're really big items in the majority of the spending. And my understanding is that generally, a lot of this is design work in the next year, and then major construction in twenty-three. And, Tim, please correct or confirm anything that's wrong here. Just wanted to clarify on that, and that we will be getting some updates for council and the public to have some input on the designs. Is that correct sometime throughout the next year?
Yes, we'll continue to update the council as we move forward with these. We're going to be working, once the capital improvement plan is passed, we'll begin engaging consultants to assist with the design. And generally speaking, the day-to-day stuff will go between our city staff and the council, but we'll certainly plan to provide updates for the council as we progress through that.
Thank you. And I had another question too, about the fire stations in particular. It looks like the plan is to just build on the adjacent properties. I'm wondering if that's correct, and what's the plan with the existing stations?
It's, that's not confirmed yet. That's kind of, that's the MO behind it. So like the North Lincoln, we've acquired some land with the idea that we're probably going to need more land, but we're in the scoping meetings right now for those, so their locations are not firm, I'll say. For the most part, generally, that's the idea at this point, but we just haven't even scoped the projects yet to determine if the final locations are going to be right there or not.
Thank you. One more comment too, is I do encourage you to, you know, open up for input as early as possible in the process, as that's, you know, shown most effective in any plan and design process to have early input. And I think that there are some big picture things that, you know, we could have conversations about, as long as we're not too far in the process. You know, things like with fire, I don't know how feasible it is, but in some conversations on our tours, you know, that they respond to a lot of medical emergencies and that we could be more, you know, maybe efficient or utilizing that. And so I think that there are some, you know, kind of big picture conversations that involve the physical building. So I would just encourage and hope that we can have input as early as possible.
Yeah, yeah, and we've got a scoping team right now that consists of myself, some of the facility supervisors, deputy director of operations, the fire chief, the deputy director, the deputy fire chief, the exec office. We've got a group together, kind of working on defining the scope right now for what we want, because we have to issue a request for qualifications to get somebody engaged to do the design. And the initial part of the design is really going to be defining the scope even more. So, kind of give us, here are some conceptual ideas, so, scale-wise. So, is this a two million dollar station, a four million dollar, six million dollar station? And what is the smorgasbord to add and add and delete? You know, what is the bare minimum that is needed versus, you know, what is the golden standard if we could afford it? So, there will certainly be, internally, we're working on the scope right now, so it's just not defined yet.
James?
Yeah, along the lines of what Grace is talking about, I was really excited to hear about the possibilities of beyond the fire station need, having resources at these locations in these parts of the community that, because they're in locations where additional office space or resources might be useful for the communities around them. And so I know that that means more, and that means more investment. That's not just a fire station, that's a public building beyond a fire station. But I think that's a really exciting possibility, particularly, I know in Ward Seven, the Silverwood neighborhood has needed a place for resources to come to them. And the North, the North Lincoln location has that kind of possibility as well. I know we have schools in our community and Park District locations in our community that provide some of those kinds of options. But schools have some of the social services, but not for necessarily all of the community. They're focused on supporting the families of schoolchildren. I know some of them go beyond that, but I think there's a real opportunity here. So that's why having input early on, as Grace is asking about, is important, so we can see the full possibility of this investment.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quizenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes.
The next ordinance was passed from the committee of the whole with no recommendations, so ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero six dash zero two five, an ordinance authorizing sale of city-owned real estate, there are four locations listed.
So, we haven't had, we need the presentation then from Public Works, and then we'll get a motion on the floor.
Good evening, council and mayor. This is an ordinance that would prescribe the manner in which the city would sell four pieces of real estate for which it is owned for some number of years and made no use of, and for which the city sees no near-term use for. Two of these parcels are currently essentially part of King Park. The Park District has been maintaining those properties. The Park District has been maintaining those properties and has a sidewalk on them. Another parcel was part of a long ago road improvement along Lincoln at Eads. And all the other parcels that were part of that project were dispossessed by the city years ago, but this one was missed. And that that property is effectively someone's front yard right now. The adjacent property owner has been has been maintaining that parcel. The last parcel, it was created when there was a road improvement on Eads. And the city has simply been mowing the lawn there for several years. In all instances, the ordinance proposes to sell each parcel for a dollar. With respect to the King Park parcels, we're simply proposing that the parcels are sold to the Park District. For the other two parcels, we're proposing, the ordinance is proposing to sell the parcels to the adjacent property owner with the longest shared property line. And I'll take any questions you may have.
Questions for Scott. Sharice?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank Scott. I called him to get information about this last week. And he was very helpful in explaining to me because all of these parcels are in my ward. So I was, I had, I had definite interest in how this was going to go about. But he was very patient with me in explaining how the little, they're so small. You know, some of them, it's just, it's just a matter of, oh, you know, take your lawnmower. And I did not know that they were still city property, but there's nothing that's big enough there to put a piece of of, put any, any type of structure on it or anything like that. It's more almost like an easement of most skinny piece of grass. And for, with the exception of the two little lots on that King Park has been maintaining. So Scott, I just wanted to thank you for informing me about the process. I appreciate it.
Any other questions for Scott? Chris?
Yeah, just so the taxpayers are clear. We're not selling buildings for a dollar. This is just blank land, right?
Correct.
Grace?
Thank you. And sorry if you just mentioned, I missed it, but these were donated to the city. Is that correct?
The city acquired some of these as just right away realignment. So the Eads property to the west, for instance. The others were probably purchased, well, the King Park properties were probably purchased as those are a little bit larger. That would have been so long ago. I don't, I don't know the details. And, and, you know, I'm not sure how we acquired. There's some details that Dan Rothermell at Public Works did, some really great work pulling up some of the history there and it's in the memo. But some of these are just realignments and some of them were purchases.
Thank you. And I had another one, too. I was just wondering if we could have or have a sense of other city owned properties that are not in use. You know, they've been leasing some for a dollar that weren't used with no buildings. And I guess just wondering what's kind of the status or the overview of city owned properties and their use or vacancy.
Yeah, so we have a small team between Public Works and Community Development that is working on bringing some order to our real estate holdings. That involved to, to a first effort to take these parcels on Wood Street in downtown, which we quickly identified as parcels we want to own long term for future Boneyard Creek development, but that we weren't going to be doing anything with in the near term. So we took that parcel right away and we leased that to Solidarity Gardens for a community garden. Our second phase of this project was to identify the next most obvious parcels that we should simply dispossess ourselves of. And that's the ordinance that you have before you tonight. Our next phase for this team is to identify sort of a third round of parcels that may have some productive use or may have some, you know, market value. And, you know, we should go through more of an auction type scenario to dispossess ourselves of them. So those, that third round will be, it's going to take more time and a more careful effort. So this is the second phase of those three there.
Any other questions?
I think Jay made a motion. I'm happy to second the motion.
That was one with no recommendation. Would you like to restate the motion?
I can, yeah. So I can move to recommend ordinance number twenty twenty one dash zero six dash zero two five and ordinance authorizing sale of city owned real estate for approval.
And I'll second that.
Okay. And just for clarification, these addresses are nine oh two Ead Street, eleven oh eight Ead Street, nine oh nine North Lincoln and nine eleven North Lincoln. Is there further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And also from the committee of the whole, resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero six dash zero two seven R. Resolution adopting the supplemental state motor fuel tax resolution for Lincoln Avenue slash Lincoln, sorry Springfield Avenue resurfacing project was passed to council with no recommendation.
Tim Cowan?
Evening, everybody. So this one, we passed a resolution back in March to authorize state motor to fuel tax funds to use for this project. At the time, we passed the authorization for authorization for two point two million, which was anticipated to cover both the construction and the construction engineering services related with this. We've recently received bids back for the construction only, which came in at two point three three million. Essentially, what we're asking for here, you know, we've reviewed the bids. In general, a lot of the bid prices are slightly higher, but a couple of the key component bid prices, such as the hot mixed asphalt, which is probably twenty five to thirty percent of the whole project is about twenty five to thirty percent higher than bids that we saw in twenty twenty. Also, things like traffic control were much higher than what we've seen in the past. Being as I don't expect for us to rebid this and have a substantial difference in any quick timeframe. I don't think if we rebid this this summer or possibly even this fall, that we're going to get much difference in that. My recommendation was to authorize additional funds to adequately fund this project in its entirety as bid. We'll certainly work with the contractor to potentially try to work on some value engineering of the project to reduce some of those costs. But the initial step is because it's state motor fuel tax funds, we have to pass a resolution to authorize up to. And typically, I would recommend a little bit beyond that so that we don't have to go back to the state to adjust it if we have small change orders there. So that's why the recommendation that you guys have in front of you is for slightly more. I think the bid came in at two point three three million. I recommended revising the budget to two point four five zero million. The construction engineering proposal came in actually less than what we expected, so I've reduced that slightly. But the total that we would be asking for as part of the supplemental resolution would be four hundred thousand dollars to take the original two point two million up to two point six million to cover both the construction and construction engineering and any potential contingencies that come up during construction.
Any questions for Tim? Grace?
Thank you. I was, I'm understanding the situation. So the bids came back higher than expected than was budgeted. And I'm confused here how the state motor fuel taxes versus state funding and stuff comes in, if you could explain that part.
Absolutely. Yeah. And that's, that's honestly something that a lot of people don't get. So as a municipality, we are allocated funds from the state motor fuel tax funds based on our population because we're a municipality. So we get a certain amount of funds sent to us, I think on a monthly basis that they say, hey, here's this money. You have to use it on transportation projects. There's rules in place for what we can and can't spend this on, generally anything transportation related. So roadways, sidewalks, pavements, drainage for roadways, signage, traffic signals, even trees that may be safety issues for pedestrians, bicyclists, other traveling motorists. But generally speaking, so because these are state allocated funds, they have a checks and balances system at the state level that we have to pass a resolution internally to say, hey, we're going to spend this money on this. That goes to the state. Once they see that, they say, okay, you, we, we've checked your account. You have enough money to spend it on this. These are all approved things. You can go spend it now. Then we have to go through the actual project, do everything. And then at the end of the project, there's a, there's a formal closeout project. So if we budget two point six and at the end of the project, we've spent two point like four or five, we have to send paperwork back to the state to tell them what we actually did. It's kind of like a self audit. So it's our money, the state gives it to us, but it's kind of like they're keeping track of it. So we have to check in with them on all these different steps.
And this is coming from that state money? And this is just needing kind of council approval to request more money from the state tax?
It's essentially our money. We just have to resolve to spend this amount on this project. And then that goes to the state. So they see it as, okay, they're taking another four hundred thousand dollars out of their pot. We need to tie it to this project so that we know they have four hundred thousand dollars less when they want to come up to do the next project. What happens in smaller communities, Urbana, we see a lot more, we have a lot more resources financially. But smaller communities, what has happened is people want to spend money and they try to do a project. And if they don't get this authorization first by the state and they try to do, say, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, they only got two hundred thousand in their account. That raises a red flag to the state to say, hey, you guys don't have that money. So if you're not spending it out of your local funds to take care of the rest of this, we need to talk.
Thank you. I did have one more question, too. I was wondering the timeframe of the, because I used to take bids from external contractors, correct? And the timeframe or deadline or how those things kind of work, because I know they can be spread out and that's kind of always a thing. Just wondering how the city handles it.
So essentially, we publish or we advertise for bids, I think, a little over three weeks early on this just because in the hopes that we do get some of the earmark funding we applied for. We wanted to try to follow federal guidelines, which federal guidelines is twenty one days in advance of bid. So we advertised more than twenty one days advance of bid. We opened bids. We followed all the federal guidelines that we can at this time. So if that earmark funding does come through, you know, essentially, we've, we've done all the necessary steps between that here and there. But essentially, we did the design, we put it out to bid, independent contractors issued bids for this. We opened bids and the contractors will have to be compliant with all of our policies. Then we'll make a, assuming, assuming the resolution passes, we would, the next step would be Public Works making a recommendation for award to the low bidder.
And how about for the construction timeframe?
Okay, so likely, if we get a contract executed within the next month, then there's just, so if from notice to award to actual final contract execution time, usually you're about a month. So if we go to notice award, you know, after this meeting, there's just time because they have to send us certificates of insurance and some other compliance forms for us to say, okay, check, check, check. You guys have done all, all of these next things for us to actually execute the contract with you now. Likely, construction on this is probably best case scenario, mid-August at this point, starting and then dependent on how aggressive they are because of the I fifty seven interchange that's happening this year. A lot of resources are getting sucked up for that. But that, that also means that some contractors, like some of the ones that bid on this, may be hungrier because of it. So they may, there's a chance that all the construction could be done before Thanksgiving. But the contract is actually a completion date contract before June first. So if they get all the concrete work done before the weather turns bad, they would come back in the spring and do all the paving. They could get it all done feasibly before Thanksgiving, but because of the, we're not really sure of what resources are available right now because of COVID. You know, there may be some advanced lag times on materials as well. So August, middle of August is probably the earliest start date in my mind. And June first is the latest completion date in my mind of next year. The idea was I wanted to make sure they had thirty days before the end of the fiscal year that we could actually close the project out, so.
Thank you for the creation.
Shandra?
This is just sort of like a curiosity question, but what sort of like your process of making sure that you get bids from women and minority owned construction?
I mean, we basically follow all the public notification guidelines. We, with state funded projects that has to be advertised on the i dot web, the i dot bulletin, which this type of work, state, using state funds also requires prequalified contractors to be prequalified with i dot to do the work. As far as, you know, we basically stipulate everything in there. They need to be compliant with all of our internal policies that we have set on that stuff and requirements to that. So they still have to go through and they either have to have an EEO compliance certificate already with the city or they have to apply and get one to get the contract awarded to them.
Any other questions? Do you want to restate the motion, Jay?
Sure. I'll make a recommendation for resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero six dash zero two seven R. A resolution adopting the supplemental state motor fuel tax resolution for Lincoln Avenue slash Springfield Avenue resurfacing project for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Jay is seconded by Sharice. Further discussion? And yes, construction will probably start about the time students come back to campus, which is what happens every year, but it's a good thing. Okay, could the clerk stop? Please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Jay. Reports of special committees, we don't have any tonight. Reports of officers. Any of the city officers have anything to report?
I think you just wanted one or either you or me to remind folks that the, the city building will be reopening on July sixth and will be back in person for council meetings, committee meetings, board and commission meetings. And the police service desk will be manned regular hours between seven AM and eleven PM.
We'll be sending out a press release later in the week announcing that to the public with more, whatever details are needed. So you'll, you'll get a copy of that. I also wanted to remind folks that ten o'clock Wednesday, June thirtieth, is the ribbon cutting for two hundred South Vine, which is the building just north of the city building. This has been a long time coming. We're told that it's fully leased. So ten o'clock Wednesday, there'll be a ribbon cutting and that will be followed by tours of a couple of the units. So you can see what's inside. And when you think about it, I think this has been at least ten years in the making. If you think about when that land was first, first acquired by the city over a decade ago. So if you're available at that time, I'd encourage you to come to the ribbon cutting. Okay, the last item on the agenda are appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. This is the time of the year when some of our hundred and thirty or so seats on our Some of our hundred and thirty or so seats on our boards and commissions, um. Come to an end or, or get restarted again. So I first wanted to, I think we'll take these in two, two. Trunks. First are appointments and these are new members coming on to, um. Three, two commissions and one board. The first is an appointment to the historic preservation commission. And this is for Laura O'Donnell for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Laura is a twenty five year resident of Urbana and adjunct professor of art history at Eastern Illinois University. In her own words on the memo that you received, she's got a master's degree in art history from the University of Illinois. She completed several architectural history courses and she remains interested in architectural history. She lives in a house that's at least one hundred years old and she's very familiar with upkeep needs of older structures. She has an interest in the preservation and protection of resources and would like to serve on the Urbana Historic Preservation Commission. Because she believes that buildings from the past enable the city to retain a connection to its historical identity. And helps attract new residents, businesses and visitors. That said, she said she doesn't believe that Urbana should hold on to a structure just because it's old, but she does believe it needs to judiciously protect those of significant aesthetic, structural and historical value. Another new appointee to the Human Relations Commission is for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. For Elizabeth Asako Kinnis Leggett, she's a thirty eight year resident of Urbana and is the student activities coordinator at Eastern Gateway Community College. She states in her application, quote, I'm dedicated to diversity, equity and inclusion. As an undergrad student at the University of Illinois, I served as an intern in the community relations office at the city of Champaign. Trained as a peer educator for the program on intergroup relations, created a class on biracial, multiracial identity. I received the UIUC Outstanding Asian American Student Leader Award in two thousand and one. As a graduate assistant for diversity and social justice education in the Office of Inclusion and Intercultural Relations at UIUC. I planned, implemented, oversaw and evaluated the I Connect Diversity and Inclusion Workshop. Which is a mandatory in-person diversity workshop for incoming students during its first year at UIUC. Also worked for the Office of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion at the University of California, Santa Cruz. Where coordinated programs like the Diversity and Inclusion Certificate Program. In addition, I'm passionate about mental health and have been involved with NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness since twenty fifteen. I'm interested in joining the commission because I'm passionate about diversity and improving my community. And then the last new appointment is for the library, um, Urbana Free Library Board for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. So, and it's, this is Sarah Bennett. Sarah is an archives librarian at the Champaign County Historical Archives. As part of her work, she plans programming and outreach events for the community about topics related to local history and genealogy. She's passionate about making the archives a vibrant and welcoming part of Champaign-Urbana. Sarah is delighted to be a part of the UPTV Commission and to aid in this vital community resource in any way. Sarah is the library, um, the Urbana Free Library Employee Representative to the Library Board. So I would entertain a motion for these appointments for Laura O'Donnell, Elizabeth Asako Kinnis Leggett and Sarah Bennett.
I would so move.
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Chandra. Are there any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So there is a seat on the Urbana Free Library Board that's designated for employees.
Yeah, it was formerly, um, yes.
And, and Sarah is currently on the Urbana Public Television Commission?
Yes.
I, I, I'll, I'll clarify that. I think that's a typo, uh, where it says the Urbana Free Library Board. She's being appointed to the UPTV Commission. She is the library representative on the UPTV Commission. So the library board previously appointed, uh. Sarah to the UPTV Commission at their June meeting and you're all approving that appointment. Where she'll be the representative on the UPTV Commission.
Well, that's our mistake. Okay. So she's the UPTV Commission. Okay.
Well, then I would, I would, I would like my, my motion, my so moved to, to be corrected to. Say that it's Sarah Bennett for the Urbana Public Television Commission, correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Chandra, you seconded, are you okay with?
Yes, yes. Okay. My second remains.
Okay. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quiz and Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti.
Yes.
Ms. Hershey.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
That motion passes. And then we have a number of, um, reappointments. Before I wanted to get into those, I do want to take a minute to acknowledge, um, three people who are. Stepping down from service on boards and commissions and they represent, um, many, many years of service to the community. The first is Tyler Fitch, who. Um, has served as chair of the Urbana Plan Commission since two thousand and thirteen. And he's been on the plan commission since two thousand and seven. So he, he's stepping down and, um, we. Have tremendous appreciation for his service on that commission. Kim Smith is stepping down from the Historic Preservation Commission and she's served since two thousand and nine. And Scott Dossett is stepping down from CPRB. Um, he's been on CPRB since its formation and just has had a, just has brought a wealth of. His institutional knowledge and a real steady presence and passion for service. Um, and the civilian police review board. So he'll be greatly missed. Okay, we have reappointments to a number of different, um, commissions. The first is Anne Heinz Silvas. Um. Let's see, and. The number of people are, these are all terms ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four, except for the last one. So Anheim Silvas. Thirty year resident of Urbana, served on the Community Development Commission for more than twenty years. She's Assistant Dean of Community and Economic Development at the U of I Extension. She's a member of the Community Development Society and serves on the Board of Directors for the Illinois Rural Development Council. Patricia Jones is also reappointed to the Community Development Commission. She's Associate Director for Research at the Beckman Institute. She worked for NASA as manager of human systems integration. She earned a BS in psychology from the University of Illinois. The MS and PhD in industrial and systems engineering from the Georgia Institute of Technology. She's a resident of Luna. And, um, provides information regarding the city of Urbana programs and services on the list there. So those are for the Community Development Commission. For the Design Review Board for terms ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Matt Cho was born and raised in Urbana. Matt owns and operates several businesses downtown, including Sip Yard, Broadway Food Hall. Cafeteria and Company and CoLab. He served previously on other boards, including the CUMTD Board. Champaign County Economic Development Corporation and the former Urbana Business Association. He has a master's in architecture and urban planning from the University of Illinois. Um, for the, uh, Jay Scott Kunkel's chair, he's been actively involved with the Building Safety Code Board of Appeals, the Design Review Board for many years. And has never missed a scheduled meeting. He's a licensed architect in Illinois, Indiana, Colorado and Florida. And an NCARB certificate holder. And I have to say, I don't know what that stands for. And brings over thirty years of experience with development in Champaign-Urbana and a wide variety of building types. For the Historic Preservation Commission, David Hayes. Professor, he's a professor and the Brenton H. and Jean B. Wadsworth, head of the Department of Landscape Architecture at the U of I. He's trained in architecture and history of art. His scholarly research and teaching include the history and theory of landscape design in early modern Europe. Interfaces between architecture and landscape and pedagogy of history and design. He's the co-editor of forty five, which is a journal of outside research and co-director of the Chicago-based gallery Space P eleven. For the Plan Commission, terms ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Andrew Fell is the owner of Andrew Fell Architecture and Design. He has extensive knowledge of building codes and development regulations from his experience working on numerous projects for clients in the city of Urbana. And the other plant commission reappointment is Jonah Weiskopf. He's lived and worked in the West Urbana neighborhood for the past twenty years. He's a commercial broker who specializes in small scale rental property. He has also created and manages multiple co-op houses in West Urbana. For the Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals, David Crowe. He's been the president of TCT Construction for more than twenty years. They operate two divisions, the TCT General Contractors and Rainbow International. TCT General Contractors has specialized in commercial building products, primarily banks, restaurants, convenience stores. Rainbow International of East Central Illinois specializes in large loss, smoke, fire, water mitigation, damage and reconstruction. And finally, for the Zoning Board of Appeals for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Um, Charles is, uh, notes that he's a graduate of the University of Michigan, but he is a loyal M.I. fan. Being on the zoning board has allowed him the opportunity to learn about, vote on issues that affect our community's growth and change. While adhering to board policies and procedures. So I want to thank all the, um, board members. Or all the volunteers who have served as board members and who continue to lend their expertise, their time, their energy. Um, and their, and their interest in our community to serve our community. And I would entertain a motion for the reappointments that were listed above.
I'd like to move to, um, for the reappointments to the Planning Commission and. And Community Development Commission, Design Review Board, Historic Preservation Commission, zoning, uh, Board of Appeals. And property maintenance, wait, wait, sorry, property, property maintenance code board of appeals. Uh, reappointments to, for approval. And, oh, yeah.
Did you include historic preservation, Sharice?
Historic preservation. Yeah, I think I said, well, those were new appointments, correct?
There's one for.
Reappointment. Historic Preservation Commission. I'd like to move for those reappointments for, move those reappointments for approval.
A second. Who was that?
Jay.
Jay, okay. Discussion. James.
Yeah, I have just a couple of questions. Um, uh, is Matt Cho continuing on the zoning board of appeals?
He is, this is for the Design Review Board. Um.
I know, I know his exact term for ZBA, but, um, he was not up for reappointment on ZBA. So I think he's in the middle of his term.
Okay, so he'll be on both boards then. I noticed that the Design Review Board has, uh, several designated seats.
Correct.
Uh, does, does he fill one of those designated seats?
Yes, there's a requirement or one of the, um, seats is for business owner. Um, so he fills that seat.
Okay, great. And then, um, I just, uh, noted, um. It, it's included here that, um, Scott Kunkel is also on the, um. Uh, safety, building safety code, Board of Appeals.
Correct.
So, um, and I, I, I noticed with the Design Review Board, um, that means we have people. Uh, crossing over that don't, that don't have designated seats like the Plant Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission. We have connections to the Zoning Board of Appeal and Building Safety by having these people serve in two roles. Is that correct?
There are people serving multiple roles, correct?
Okay. Well, some of them are defined, it looks like by the.
Yes.
By the enacting documents of those, those areas.
Correct. So for instance, um.
I'm just trying to understand.
There are some designated seats on, um. Building Safety Board, uh, for instance, there's like architect. Um, attorney. So there are designated seats on that. Uh, also developer role. So I can't remember which Scott fills on that one, if it's the architect or the developer. Similarly, on the Design Review Board, uh, there's designated seats and, um, Scott fills the. Architect. Sorry, we have, we have a lot of changes. So, uh, he fills the architecture seat on that one.
Okay, so I, those, those connections are gonna be parts of the things I think. Counsel, at least I know as a new council member, I'd like to understand and. And when they're there for a reason, I'd like to understand them. And when they're just, uh, uh, a person who likes to volunteer, that, that, that's what I'd like to know as well. So.
Just to give you a little preview, the Property Maintenance Board and the Building Safety Board, uh, we will be bringing to you a merging of that board and a giant. Code, re, uh, code change process. Um, so we will be explaining a lot about those boards to you shortly. Well, in a few months, uh, when we bring that code amendment to you.
Yep. And I do want to make it clear that I'm asking this question not about those two individuals. They, they seem imminently qualified. I just wanted to understand the connection better.
Now, when you start to look at our boards and commissions, we have various varying numbers on boards. We have very small boards. We have. Boards and commissions that are eleven members. That's probably one of our biggest. Um, some of them have designated seats. When the enacting ordinances were passed, they specify, we want people from this, 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 and this areas of expertise and others are, are open. Um, we have vacancies. We're gonna, once we get all these, um. Now that we've gotten the appointments and reappointments done, we'll put together a list of all the vacancies that are available on all the boards and commissions. And, um, share that with you so you can help us recruit good members. Um, and we also just recently learned there now will be two vacancies on the, uh, in addition to everything within the city. I also make appointments to the Housing Authority Board of Directors or Board, and there are now going to be two. Uh, vacancies on that board that Urbana, City of Urbana appoints. So I'll be looking for, um, commissioners for the Housing Authority Board as well. Um, but we, we, we do have other vacancies to fill as well. The, the one board that gets multiple applications, way more than can be accommodated, is always the Urbana Free Library Board. So last time there was an opening, I think we got twelve applications and we were able to successfully, um, recruit a number of. Members for other boards and commissions out of the pool of candidates for the library board. So that was, that was, uh, productive. Anyway, um. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Hershey.
Yes.
Ms. Colasetti.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Mr. Quiz and Barry.
Yes.
That motion passes. And with no further business before the council, I want to wish you all a happy new year, happy new fiscal year. And happy fourth of July and we'll see you next week. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.